Planning Commission Joint Work Session, the 22nd of February 2022. And so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I welcome those on the City Council. I welcome those on the Planning Commission. And it looks like we've got one or two others that are with us this evening. So, welcome. With that, I'm going to, um, um, we'll be talking this evening about the missing middle, middle housing and have a discussion with that. So I will turn the topic over to Planning Director Heather Richards. Heather?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Councilors. I apologize, I just forwarded the link to my planning team. I didn't realize I hadn't sent it to them. They're fairly critical for this discussion. But anyways, for tonight, we wanted to bring to you actually what we're calling our Residential Design and Development Standards. It has grown a little bit since the missing middle housing discussion. And we'll walk you through that. We are under a fairly tight timeframe for this in terms of a state mandate to get it adopted by June 30, 2022.
Chris, you've got your hand raised?
Yeah, I'm sorry. But I don't necessarily, and I know some of these folks by name, but I don't know all of these folks. Would it be possible to have a brief go around with the Planning Commission so I know who these folks are?
Chris, point well taken. I think, and vice versa, they may not even know us as well as we think they do. So I'm just going to start up at the top left for me. And everybody knows Heather, but Heather, if you'd like to just introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Heather Richards, Planning Director for the City Council.
And we all work with Heather. So, thank you for making the preparations for tonight's discussion. I'm Mayor Scott Hill. And then let's go over to Brian.
I'm Brian Randall. I represent Ward Two, right? Yeah, Ward Two, the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Jeff?
Jeff Towery, City Manager.
Chris?
Chris Channell, City Counselor.
Sid?
Hi, Sid Winfield, Chair of Planning Commission.
Beth?
Hey, I'm in Ward One, I'm on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Amanda?
Amanda Guile, Hinman City Attorney.
Great. Matthew?
Matthew DePpe, At-Large Planning Commissioner.
Dan?
Yeah, good evening, Dan Chakowsky, I'm Ward Two Planning Commissioner.
Great. Zach?
Zach Geary, City Counselor, Ward Two, former Planning Commissioner.
Yeah, you won't, you won't give that title up, will you? Too much fun. Lori? You're on mute, Lori.
Sorry, Lori Shonche, Planning Commissioner as well.
Thank you. Kelly?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good, okay. Kelly Menke, City Counselor, Ward Two.
Thank you. Adam?
Adam Tate, Associate Planner.
Silla?
Silla McClellan, Planning Commissioner, Ward One.
Monica?
Hi, Monica Bilidu, Senior Planner.
And for some of us, uh, if you, if you don't go to the, um, if you don't go to the landscape meetings, you may not have, uh, have met Monica, but we welcome her. Heather, is she the latest addition to our planning department?
Yes, she is. As of tomorrow, we'll have another new person joining us tomorrow.
Okay, so you're going to have tenure tomorrow, Monica, that'll be good.
I have a few more hours to bask in this, in this place.
Let's go ahead to Tom.
Hi, Tom Shower, Senior Planner with the Planning Department.
Adam?
Adam Garvin, Ward Three, City Counselor.
Then we've got some staff. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Quayre, I'm the Finance Director.
I'm going to go back up to Council President Grabkin, our newest pillar award winner within the group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Remy Grabkin, McNimble City Council, Ward Three, Council President.
And let's go down to Jenny.
Jenny Berg, Library Director.
Okay, Sal, I see you now. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Sal Peralta, City Council.
Great. And then we've got some other partners on the line that aren't necessarily a part of, of the City Planning Commission or the City Council, but they're partners that represent other aspects of what we're doing, so we welcome them also. So again, thank you, Chris, for bringing that to our attention. I think we know a little more about one another. So I'll turn it back over to Heather.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Councilor Channell. I did want to share with the City Council that the Planning Commission is a, a body of volunteers that typically everyone is at the meeting, we have very little absenteeism. And they have recently had four or five hour meetings, and they just recently also agreed to go to two meetings a month. So this is a very hardworking group for you as the city, so we appreciate that.
Um, so I'm going to go through the package that we sent to you, and we go through it in a presentation style, but there's a lot of information. I'm not including all the information in the presentation. As we go along, if you have a question, I'll prompt you for questions when we get through a certain section to see if there's questions relative to that section. And if you have questions as we go, please feel free to ask them. We'll keep an eye on the time, and if we need to, you know, speed up at any point in time so we can get through all of it, we'll let you know that. I noticed that on the PDF that went out, we usually in the Planning Commission talk about things relative to the page numbers in the PDF of the package. But the PDF that went out sort of duplicated the page numbers on top of each other. So I guess what I'm going to suggest is that we use the bold page numbers from the code document when you want to reference something, because that might be the easiest for everyone to read. That would be page numbers up to 73. Okay, with that said, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, I'm hoping you can see a screen that just has the primary slide on it.
Yes, Heather, it is, it's available to us.
Thank you. So these are proposed code amendments that we're bringing to you. This is a work session to go over them. We will be bringing it into a public hearing process fairly soon. What we're going to focus on tonight is this new chapter that we're introducing into our McNimble Municipal Code called Chapter 17.11. When you get the full package of code amendments, there will be several other code amendments associated with it that are more editorial to support this overall project. So tonight's work session, we're going to review the timeframe for the adoption of these amendments. It is a state mandate, so it's important for us to be working towards that. We're going to review the proposed structure for how to fold these amendments into the existing zoning ordinance. And then we're going to review the details of the proposed amendments for each housing type and universal design standard. This meets your City Council goals and objectives in the following way. Your goal, growth and development character, to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods. This is a residential design and development standard package to do just that. And defining the unique character through a community process that articulates our core principles, educating and building support for innovative and creative solutions, and strategically planning for short and long-term growth and development that will create enduring value for the community. We feel it meets all of those objectives, and then it also meets your goal for housing opportunities, to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods, and to collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of diverse housing development opportunities. So the timeframe for adoption for this, this is coming from what's commonly referred to as House Bill 2001, or the Missing Middle Housing Bill. That was adopted in 2019 as part of the legislative session. So it's adopted in late June, early July. And it requires cities of certain sizes to allow middle housing in all areas and properties that allow for the development of detached, single-family dwellings. So for those cities that are considered large cities, and that's any city over 25,000 in population, you need to allow all types of middle housing on lots that allow detached, single-family dwellings. And McNimble falls into that category. This package is really focused on housing choice and housing options, and we must adopt our amendments by June 30, 2022, or we will be mandated to follow the state model code until we adopt our own amendments. And we do have housing developers who are waiting for us to adopt these, these code amendments. This is a map that shows where these code amendments will buy in the city of McNimble. So if you'll see from the map, it's really impactful. It's going to impact probably about 80% of the overall city in terms of where these code amendments will apply. And they will apply in all of our residential zones, except for our R5 zone, and our R5 zone isn't currently located on any property within the city limits. If you recall, that's a zone that we've set up to do some higher-density housing in the new UGB areas. The House Bill 2001, after it was passed, went through a rulemaking process. So the State Department of Land Conservation and Development led a rulemaking process that more specifically prescribed the House Bill 2001 requirements. And that's important for the McNimble story, and I'll walk you through why that is important. And those rules weren't adopted until December 9 of 2020. I provided a copy of both House Bill 2001 and the Oregon Administrative Rules in your staff report and packet. We call it OAR Division 46, and it walks through what those, what the rulemaking committee identified as the prescriptive requirements for cities to meet in terms of these missing middle housing codes. And then also, the rulemaking committee adopted, put together a model code. So the work completed to date, in April 2019, the City Council adopted our Great Neighborhood Principles. That's what we call our baker's dozen of principles, where we feel everybody who lives in McNimble deserves to live in a great neighborhood. And those principles talk about how those neighborhoods are built and developed, and also the different types of things that we're trying to achieve in the neighborhoods. And that's important, because these principles were used as a decision-making filter for this code amendment package. So it's looking at natural feature preservation, scenic views, parks and open spaces, neighborhoods that are pedestrian and bike-friendly, and are accessible, that have connected streets, that are built with a human-scale design, that have a mix of activities, that have an urban-rural interface, a house housing for diverse incomes and generations, a housing variety, and unique and integrated design elements. But I also want to point out that the, the number one principle, the Great Neighborhood Principles, the reasons we put this together, and this is from our comp plan, is that the Great Neighborhood Principles shall be applied in all areas of the city to ensure equitable access to a livable, egalitarian, healthy, social, inclusive state, and vibrant neighborhood for all McNimble citizens. And remember, that was adopted in 2019 and put together by Project Advisory Committee through meetings that occurred through the year of 2018. So very prevalent in terms of our discussions today about diversity, equity, and inclusion, but something that was already being developed and thought about as we were looking at housing in neighborhoods in McNimble back in 2018, and is embedded in our comprehensive plan. Two of the Great Neighborhood Principles that are significant, even more important for the work we're doing here, is the housing principles. So we have, we have a housing for diverse incomes and generation principle. The great neighborhoods will provide housing opportunities for people and families with a wide range of incomes, and for people and families in all stages of life. And housing variety, in that great neighborhoods have a variety of building forms and architectural variety to avoid monoculture design. So also in our comp plan, when we adopted our Great Neighborhood Principles, we adopted a proposal, the proposals in our comp plans are sort of our commitment to future work. And that proposal stated, the city shall develop development codes that allow for a variety of housing types and forms, and should develop site and design requirements for those housing types and forms. So this is all the stuff that was put together in 2018, and that was adopted by the city in 2019. And this is prior to the House Bill 2001 discussion that was going through the legislature. Also in 2018 and 19, we had another Project Advisory Committee that was working on our housing needs analysis and our draft housing strategy. And I wanted to share a little bit about that with you too, because that provides some of the back, background for the work in front of you today. So in housing, in Oregon land use, there's a traditional approach to how you achieve less, how you achieve housing for all your different income levels in the community. And so that, that traditional approach is that the more affordable housing is really relying upon multifamily development, apartment complexes. And it really puts people who are in sort of the need for more affordable housing into this rental position only. And then it also, we look at less affordable housing, so those serving higher-income demographics, as single-family detached housing. And that also puts them into a position of opportunity for homeownership. So therein of itself, with our traditional approach, we're already creating inequity in terms of our housing. So the committee working on the housing strategy said, let's, that's not right. We're going to disrupt that assumption. And we're going to really look at, how can we have an equitable approach to this in McNimble moving forward? How do we strive to create ownership and rental opportunities at all income levels? And so this is a chart that's in our housing strategy that talks about the different income levels and the different types of housing that you can find in those income levels to serve people in those incomes, and that also will provide homeownership opportunities when, when that opportunity presents itself. And we wanted to make sure, moving forward, that in McNimble, when we were thinking about different housing needs and the types of housing to serve those needs, that we were bringing this into play. We also had a discussion that we didn't want to move forward with Euclidean zoning anymore. So Euclidean zoning is when you sort of isolate different types of uses and residential uses. That means you have high-density housing over here in this section of the community, that's where you have all your apartment complexes. And then you have low-density housing over here in this section of the community, and that's where you have sort of your single-family detached neighborhoods. The Project Advisory Committee working on this draft housing strategy said, we really want to distribute housing types across the city. And that gets back to that principle of diverse housing types in every neighborhood. And so we talked a lot about zoning that would encourage that mixed housing type in every neighborhood. And this draft housing strategy, again, put together before House Bill 2001, had a recommendation that we move forward with two zones in McNimble. One that was a mixed zone for all different types of housing, and one that was a high-density only zone. And you'll see from, from the package that's in front of you today, based on what happened with House Bill 2001, we got to that end goal in a slightly different pathway than we had originally anticipated, but I think it's going to work in terms of what our original strategies were. So this is a timeline of what's happened since then, since those different strategies were put together. We hired a consultant, and we're working with, planning staff was working with them from February to August to do these design and development standards for our housing, based on wanting to have housing types for everyone, and to allow for homeownership at different income levels. And also to work on, how do we create one zone where all housing types are allowed? And so we were working with a consultant on that work. Then in July, House Bill 2001 passed. And then we then discovered that DLCD wanted to do rulemaking for House Bill 2001. So we put a pause on our work with the consultant, because we wanted to find out what happened with that. And then the rulemaking passed in December of 2020. And so then we brought back the consultant, said we now need to make sure we're conforming with the rules. And we walked through what we had put together and how to rearrange it to conform with the rules that DLCD had put together. And we started reviewing those standards with the Planning Commission. We did it over the course of five different work sessions in January. And we also worked on updating our housing needs analysis and housing strategy, and brought that to bear in June 2020. And then we started having work sessions with the City Council as well. So the last work session we had with US City Council was in August of 2021, to discuss our draft residential design and development standards. Since that work session, we have added multifamily and single-room occupancies to the overall code package, based on recommendations that we got from the Planning Commission and the Affordable Housing Committee. Oh, and I wanted to point out, we did have three public information sessions in April of 2021, when we got our initial draft done. So what we're doing moving forward from here is we're marching towards that June 30 date. So we've noticed DLCD that we're going to have our first public hearing. We will have it on March 17. We have to let them know 35 days in advance. And then we also put together this joint work session for the Planning Commission and the City Council to look over this draft package and provide some feedback before we bring it into that public hearing. We will next week be embarking on public informational sessions. They're advertised in the paper right now, and being pushed out on social media. We're offering four different public informational sessions for anybody who wants to learn more about the proposed amendments. And then we are expecting, hoping, that the Planning Commission will be able to get to a decision by their meeting on April 21, so we can bring it to you in May, and have a decision from City Council on June 21, so that it then is in effect before June 30, or close to June 30. We have visited with DLCD, and if we haven't adopted ordinance, maybe even if it's not in effect yet, they, they feel that will meet the test of the law. So this is our public information sessions at the times which we are offering them. We picked a variety of different times throughout the week to be able to make it into different people's calendars. And if anybody's interested in learning more about them, just Google "shaping up missing middle housing in McNimble," and you should pop into our project website, where it gives all the Zoom links for the different meetings. And this is the advertising that's currently running in the newspaper and on social media. So the proposal, yes?
I'm sorry, I put my hand up, but I wanted to catch you back a couple of slides ago. You'd said, the dates on this is you're hoping to get a decision by ordinance, June 21, the deadline is June?
30.
What happens if that, I mean, it, it, I could, it hasn't been altogether uncommon for something to come before us, and we send it back for more information. What happens if you bring this before this on 21st, and we need more information in order to make a legitimate decision?
Then we will be working under the state model code, which is in the Administrative Rules that we provided to you. The state model code, what you're going to find in there, so what we have in these proposed amendments are design standards and development standards, based on what we've heard from the community, they want to see developed here. The state model code does not have any of that, and it has more, I guess I would say it's a little bit more rigid in terms of the allowances for the developer, meaning that it flexes more on the allowances to the developer side than the community side, if that makes sense.
And I get that. So my question would be, wouldn't we be, if, instead of having that come at us at June 21, with such a pressing deadline right behind it, is there any way to get it a little sooner to give time for changes or more information, so it could come back to us before that happens?
Well, we would try.
I know you're under a lot of pressure.
Yeah. So we have to notice DLCD 35 days in advance of our first public hearing. So that pushes us to March 17. And then afterwards, it's just how quickly it gets through these processes is how quickly we'll get it to City Council for consideration. What I wouldn't be able to do is turn around minutes from an April 21 meeting into the first week, the first meeting in May for City Council. It would come to you without the minutes from the Planning Commission. But we could do that if you wanted to do a staff report first and consider that, and then move it into a discussion at a future meeting with the minutes.
I don't want to rush it, but at the same time, I don't want to put us in a position where we're up against the wall and don't have time to, to have it further reviewed before we make a final decision. So I don't know what the balance is there, but I, I just want to be balanced in how we handle that going through there.
Okay. And that's probably a great discussion to have after this work session tonight, as to where your comfort level is, and where you think you need it to sit to work through the details more effectively, either at the Planning Commission or the City Council.
Let's go up to Council President Grabkin, and then Sid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Heather, for the presentation and the packet. I am actually, Chris, I just wanted to offer up really not just to you, but to the whole council as well, that it's perfectly acceptable to get your packet, and if you know there's a piece of information that's going to be an important decision-maker for you, and we've had that happen recently in council meetings, where we've heard that, you know, there's a piece of information that was in the packet that was absolutely necessary for some, someone to make a decision, that those information requests can also be set in advance. Or if you have a lot of questions, it's really acceptable to send those in advance, too. I had probably six questions regarding this packet that I emailed Heather in advance, just knowing that they were going to be important in decision-making today. So I'm just going to kind of throw that out there for the council and encourage that as well. Thanks for the time.
Let's go to Sid, and then to Chris again.
Yeah. I know within the Planning Commission, we've discussed going to two meetings. Heather, would that be able to help push up the, the dead, some of the, the timing for this, if we were able to get to the decision a little bit sooner in April, if we go to two meetings?
Yeah, so if we brought it in to Planning, in your first meeting, if you recall, we decided not to do two meetings in March, because we can't vote at that date. And you made that decision in early April, we would then be able to get it into City Council at their first meeting in May.
Thank you, Sid. Let's go to Chris.
Council President, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council President's hand is still up. I don't know if that's...
I don't know that she put it down from her time, so, go ahead. If so, we'll go to Remy afterwards.
Okay, sure. I know. So I appreciate the, the, what you're throwing out, Council President. Oftentimes, I choose not to make my questions that way, because I feel like if I have that question, members of the community might have that question, and other members on the call might have that question. So by waiting until I get to the meeting to present questions, I, I feel like I'm, I'm offering it up a way to, for people to learn that may not be able to learn. On the other hand, I also understand the balance that we need to try to be cognizant of the time of our staff. And, and so trying to run that balance, I get it. And I, and I appreciate your, your comments along those lines. And Sid, thank you for your offer. That probably, I don't know from the behind the scenes, but I appreciate you being willing to do something to alleviate my concerns.
And Councilor Jowick, just to let you know, what we typically do when we get questions from either commissioners or city councilors, we try to answer them in our presentation back to you. So I actually haven't gotten back to Remy on her questions. I said we would bring the answers tonight, except for one that was fairly detailed, that we thought we would get her some information, but we'll still provide it tonight to you as well. And if we get lots of questions from commissioners, if you recall, during the UGB process, we'll answer those in writing and send them out to everyone in advance of the meeting, and then put it in the public record, so everyone can read it.
Let's go up to Sal. Sal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heather, I just had a meta-question, if I could. You have two new staff members in planning. How has this law, trying to respond to the law, affected the workflow in your department?
It's been very difficult. So the, you know, I also have six annual reports that are new that we need to provide to the state, which, by the way, I haven't done yet. Because, you know, we're, we're trying to keep up with state mandated deadlines and work through it with staff transition as well, so.
So I, I know this is probably not a question you kind of prepared for, but based on just new state mandated requirements, how is that, like, in terms of staffing needs in FTEs, can you kind of quantify that?
I probably can't quantify that, to be honest. I probably can't quantify that, to be honest with you. Because what I need to do is get my FTEs filled and then understand it better. If the question is, are the state mandates making, putting workload on us in such a way that we need additional FTEs to respond to it?
Yeah, I mean, I think my question was really primarily one of of just wanting to acknowledge that I feel like your office has been operating, you know, busting at the seams over capacity in terms of your need. And I just wanted to kind of point out that this isn't a lot of roles or responsibilities that you've sought out or that the city has assigned. They're mandated requirements that the state has put down. And a lot of what you're doing, it seems to me also, you know, whether, and that's whether it's the UGB model and coming up with the successful implementation of that plan or trying to come up with secondary funding sources or major funding sources for our projects. So I just thought it was important to acknowledge that and the work that you're doing and your staff is doing in a very difficult circumstance while you're understaffed.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Yeah, and I should say, I mean, Chuck was our lead on this and and he departed in September. So I had to wait till we transitioned, got some additional planners on board. Monica's been helping me with this. She's the one who actually put this into the zoning ordinance just recently. So our newest member is the one who put this together for you tonight.
That's great to hear. Let's go up to Kelly.
I certainly appreciate Councilor Peralta's comments as well as Council President Remy's Drapkins. I just wanted to point out that even though there is a fair amount of new information within this packet, that a number of the things that we will be talking about tonight have been presented as part of the UGB expansion and a number of other planning things. So I mean, it's not like we're going to get hit with a ton of stuff that's the first time you've ever seen it. And I just kind of wanted to make that comment before we get into the whole discussion to just, you know, I think you've seen things that you'll see, you've seen before.
Thank you for those insights, Kelly. Any other questions at this point? Not seeing anything. Let's move on. Heather, go ahead.
Okay, certainly. And that was supposed to be the easy part of the presentation. So here we go. So our proposed structure, you haven't seen this before. It's been in a different structure. We've only, this is the first time we've put it into our zoning ordinance, which made it, it makes it a little bit awkward. And as I said in my staff report, our goal is to have it both in a zoning ordinance and then also to have an informational booklet for developers that sort of walks through, you know, best practices and our thoughts and ideas behind what's in the zoning ordinance language. So House Bill 2001 tells us we have to focus on the following missing middle housing types duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes. And then it also tells us how we have to focus on those, so that it's fairly detailed in the administrative rules. I told you that we use the Great Neighborhood Principles as one of our decision making filters for this package. And so that's what led to our universal design standard. So we said, we have these principles. We think every neighborhood should have, should have, you know, follow these principles. And so we put together these universal design standards to reflect that and to respond to those Great Neighborhood Principles. And then that draft 20 housing strategy is where we focused on homeownership and rental opportunities at all income levels and needs. And so with that, with that principle, we've introduced three additional housing types to to what's in front of you. So tiny homes has been introduced and you won't find this in many communities where they have a code provision for tiny homes if people want to build tiny homes. We also have introduced single room occupancy housing units and then multi dwelling as well. We don't have any design development standards for our multi dwelling projects. And we've heard a lot from the community that we should have those. So our residential design and development standards are for all housing types. And we had to figure out how to fold that into the code. So we are introducing a new chapter called 17.11. It follows the area master planning process, which was our UGB process that we introduced into the code. And it's right before our our actual chapters, which are the zoning chapters. And so in chapter 17.11, what we tried to tried to do was identify the purpose, what the different housing types were. We put together this zoning table to make it easy to figure out which housing type is allowed in which zone. We define the housing types and then we put together these development standards tables, again, to make it easy to figure out what types of development standards are applicable to each housing type. And then we have special sections for each housing type themselves. And we have apartment design standards and universal design standards. So the universal design standard is for all housing types. Apartment design standards has a couple of additional ones due to the types of projects associated with apartments. And I'm going to share with you right now, I think that we'll we'll rearrange this and actually put the universal design standards after the last housing type of single room occupancy, create apartments and their design standards below that. It will make more sense. So we're probably at, like I would say, a 90% completion on this. We know there's formatting issues in the code that that document is embedded with so much formatting that Monica and I are pulling our hair out at different times. And we also know that there's refinement and cleanup that needs to occur. But we want to get you through the big pieces of it to make sure we're on the right track. So this is the zoning table of allowed housing types. I'd like to do this actually for all of our land use classifications in McNimble. So we're not always just hunting these down in each chapter. But for the housing, we said, let's make it easy and share with, you know, whoever what the house, what zone allows which type of housing type overall in terms of this package. And so it's fairly intuitive. Yes, it's allowed. No, it's not allowed. And L means it's limited. So there's, there are some provisional standards that need to happen before that that type of housing type's allowed in that zone. And we have it across the board from R1 to C3. C3 being because that's where we allow multifamily as well. Then the development standards table is as new for our zoning ordinance. But again, it's it's sort of trying to get everything at a glance and not have to read through all this narrative to find the answers. And so each development standard table is set up the same way. It's set up with a subdivision component and a planned development component. So the subdivision component is really if you're going to come in with a standard subdivision, then this is what you need to do. And for the most part, it's to match the existing underlying zone. So the same minimum lot size and setbacks of the underlying zone and, you know, work through what that means. What we'd like to encourage developers to do though is do the planned development piece of it. And that's really common here in McNimble as well, but it allows us to get to the mixed types, the different types of housing types in these neighborhoods. And then it would also allow the the developer to do the, to have development standards that are more applicable to that housing type. So if you think about a tiny house, for example, you don't want to put a tiny house on a 5,000, 7,000 or 9,000 square foot lot. You really want to put it on a lot that makes the most sense for a tiny house in terms of what they also need to be able to accommodate landscaping, yards and parking. So in this case, if the developer chooses to do it with an alley loaded product, it would be a minimum lot size would be 1,400 square feet for a tiny home. A tiny home, just so you know, is 400 square feet or less. And if they chose to do it without an alley, the minimum would be 2,100 square feet. Commissioner Drapkin asked who makes the decision about alley versus no alley? And really, that's a developer decision to make. We do anything that's, any lot that is less than 40 square feet in width, we do require them to go into an alley loaded position with it because there's just not enough frontage on the street to be able to do all the other things that are required in terms of street trees and the utilities and stuff like that. So there is some discretion, there's some discretion on the developer and then we do have that minimum threshold. But we wanted to allow that for each housing type and then under planned development. That's where you see, this is where our original plan went when we said we want one zone that allows all housing types. And we were working on this saying, what's the, what's the, this lot that you need to accommodate this housing type? This is what the House Bill 2001 pushed us to do as well, so we're just keeping that in there. And then we also have figures that try to walk through what it looks like to help people understand it a little bit better. And the figures have the the lettering on it that correspond with this lettering over here, which is also part of our zoning ordinance. So section such and such and such and such, sub point A is lot. And then just to remind you about the planned development purpose, the purpose of a planned development is to provide that greater flexibility and greater freedom of design in the development of land that may be possible under strict interpretation of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. And it's the further the purpose is to encourage a variety in the development pattern of the of the community, encouraging mixed uses in a planned area. So this type of approach to the housing types really helps us get into that flexibility. So the housing types themselves, is there any questions about how it's structured with the development standards table? See, Monica's going to tell me if people raise their hands. So housing types themselves, one of the questions we had to ask ourselves as a community, we went to the City Council and Planning Commission with this question is, we can decide that the housing types have to be attached to be considered that type of housing type or it can be detached. And what that means is for a duplex, you can have a stacked duplex, one on top of the other. You can have them side by side. You can have two detached units on one lot that are side by side. And the the difference between this and the primary dwelling accessory dwelling unit is that they, these can be the same size as a sort of dwelling unit is is prescriptive in terms of size to the primary unit. And you can also have them back to front. And the same would be through true for a triplex. So a triplex could be attached, they could be separated, it could be a duplex in one unit. So the decision that we, the the direction that we got from Planning Commission and City Council was to allow attached and detached in these provisions. So it's not a matter of how they are structurally constructed with each other. It's how many units are on a lot is how we're going to interpret it as a triplex, quadplex or duplex. And that allows more flexibility. So the tiny homes themselves, tiny homes provide a less expensive homeownership option than a larger single dwelling. So there is an opportunity to actually own these homes as a product. There are no, they can't be larger than 400 square feet. And if done in a planned development, it'd be on a fairly small lot size. But it is an opportunity for people to build some real estate equity that right now is not available to people with of lower incomes. And so we went through the development standards for it. The maximum height is 25 feet. That's really based on trying to meet into this 400 square feet and what makes the most sense for that. Councilor Drapkin also asked about the maximum height. So in most of these, you'll find the maximum height is relative to the underlying zone height. This is the one place where we made the decision that the maximum height should be less than what the the underlying zone, which is 35 feet, because it just doesn't make sense to build three stories that are 400, that will be 400 square feet in total. And then it it goes through all the different requirements here and the and the different types of universal design standards that apply. A cottage cluster, this is something we've talked about in McNimble for a couple of years now. The Affordable Housing Committee worked through a code amendment for this. And we were waiting for this project to come online to bring it into our zoning ordinance. And we actually have some developers who are waiting for us to adopt this so they can build some cottage clusters. But really a cottage cluster is taking one parcel and putting several different cottages on them. For the OAR, for the Missing Middle Housing Code, no unit can be larger than 900 square feet. So it is prescribed in terms of size. And you can have more, you can have four to 18 of these on a parcel, depending on how you meet the different standards here. So obviously, if you have 18 units, your parcel may need to get bigger. One of the things we wanted to do within the subdivision standard is we wanted to make sure that these new housing types were able to go into an existing neighborhood that had either vacant lots or a lot that someone wanted to redevelop and still meet the form and rhythm of that neighborhood in terms of compatibility. So you'll see that this talks a lot about the minimum size and setbacks and things like that so so that it can meet the neighborhood in terms of when you're walking down the street, it feels like you're in the same form and rhythm. Cottage clusters is a great way to bring in smaller housing types into an existing neighborhood where it doesn't disrupt that rhythm.
Heather, could I ask a question just to help understand size wise? You know, the the boutiques that are going in on Alpine and Ninth? How large are those cottages that are there? Are they maybe 600 to 800 square feet?
Geez, I wish I knew the answer to that, Mayor, and I don't know. I'll be able to tell you at the City Council meeting when I present that project tonight, if you can look it up. I do know that to give you a relativity of size, the Rudens have been building out what they call their small lot, small bungalow subdivision up at Chegwin Farms. And those are about 1,000 square feet to 1,200 square feet.
Okay, well, it just, I know because many of us have been going by them and those cottages are going up and it gives you kind of a sense of of a kind of a cottage cluster in a rental situation as compared to a living situation.
Yeah, yeah. So cottage clusters also have design standards. It's one of the housing types that has its own design standards and that's because of the type of housing it is. And so it's it's several different cottages clustered together. And so it looks for common area open space and all sorts of other things in that overall design. That's part of the the housing type. These have been very successful in many communities. Lincoln City has several of these developments as well. And Central Oregon has built a lot of these cottage cluster developments too. Accessory dwelling units, that's currently in our code, but we're bringing it into this housing type. So none of this is changing based on what's in our code today. And it's that secondary self-contained dwelling unit. And it only can be allowed in conjunction with a primary dwelling unit. And in McNimble right now, it's only allowed with a detached, single dwelling house. And then single detached houses. So we've heard a lot from the community that they want a minimum design standard for single detached houses. And so we've been building those into our planned development land use decisions. If you recall, we originally built it into the Baker Creek South Developments. And the community came back and said, it's not, it hasn't gone far enough. We need it to go further in terms of public facing facades. And so the Baker Creek North Development has a larger set of design standards associated with those homes. And it's really focused on those, the facades that are single, that are public facing. But we wanted to bring that into this overall housing type, have the development standards. None of this is changing. I do want to point out to you that based on House Bill 2001, it's mandated by the state that the city cannot require more than one parking space per unit for any missing middle housing house type. And currently in McNimble, we do require two parking spaces per dwelling unit for single detached homes. We're recommending to continue to move forward with that. We're concerned about the state mandate of just one parking space per dwelling unit because we don't have transit in McNimble. And there are many families that are vehicular dependent. And we're concerned about equity because we actually feel some of our lower income families are even more vehicular dependent in terms of being able to get the shift oriented work and things like that. So we we want to make sure that there's an equity in terms of how we're approaching the housing types. It looks like Council Peralta has his hand raised.
Thank you, Heather. So if the state mandate is one car per location in this missing middle housing and we feel that won't meet our city's needs, what what are the options available to us?
We don't have any options available to us. We we testified fairly rigorously at the state level, as did many other smaller communities that were not adjacent to metro areas that don't have access to transit or great transit. And yes, there was no interest. So I don't know what our options are. I am worried about it. If you drive through some of our neighborhoods, you know, there is a lot of on-street parking occurring for families that have multiple cars. We even brought census data to the state to show that our, over 50% of our households have more than two cars. But it still didn't play very well. Their, their response was the developer will do the right thing.
Is there, is there a provision legislation for, like, what would, what would be the remedy? Is this something that the city can actually sue the state in court over the provision? Or is there some legal forum that we can avail ourselves to?
Amanda, about any discussion of a legal remedy, I will let you. I will let you know that parking, the required, the mandate that cities cannot require more than one parking, um, off-street parking spot per dwelling unit um, is probably been the most controversial for every city that's moved this forward.
Let's go up to Chris. Chris?
I, I just wanna uh, follow up on what Sal was asking. So you're recommending that we ignore the state mandate and keep it at two parking spaces? Um, is, is what you're saying, correct?
No. So what I, what I'm saying is the state mandate's only for the missing middle housing types. It's not for your single detached homes. Even though that's part of this package. And our recommendation is keep the two parking spaces per dwelling unit right now as, uh, that we require here at the city McMinnville. Carry that forward for single detached homes. I am concerned about equity issues. Um, but I also, I'm concerned about on-street parking congestion. It's interesting, McMinnville went to skinny streets for land use efficiencies and um, and this, you know, this is contrary to that.
So Sal, if I'm reading, if I'm reading you correctly, Sal, um, you have some interest in perhaps moving forward with doing something about this parking mandate? Um, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm, I'm interested in knowing what our options are and, and how, how much of a consequence it is. If there are multiple cities without transit um, options for residents. Uh, and this would leave people without, you know, modes of transit, then it's something that I think we should look at.
I would join you in that as well.
You know, I, I, I remember our discussion as we were looking at a Baker Creek South. And when we were looking at the higher density locations with the very um, short frontage and, and not as long of backyard. But how, how distinctly we said that, you know, in the garage, there had to be enough space between the sidewalk and the garage to be able to park a car. But as I'm out and about, as, as most people do, they, they don't have enough room in their home. So they use their garage as storage. And then they only have two places instead of four places, and the remainder go out in the street. So I think it's really legitimate, you know, that the spaces are needed, but it's gobbling up a lot of our um, our, 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 our street. And, and, and I, I remember down at South Baker Creek, you know, there just wasn't any place with a number of driveways when we had a 45-foot frontage. So all these are legitimate questions and concerns.
Yeah, I think it's something for us to watch. Um, yet the other thing that's new, just for cloudiness, it even more, is that last year, the building codes division um, adopted a new regulation that for any housing type over two units of triplexes, quadplexes, et cetera, um, that require parking at all, even just one parking space, that, that they will need to provide a band accessible ADA space.
Amanda, you have your hand raised.
Um, I just wanted to touch on the discussion about the parking and to note, going against state mandates, is this something that's been litigated when you go directly contra- contrary to what a state statute says? And this, we do get funding from the state. So there are consequences if we were to try and take action that was directly contrary to a state statute. Um, but something we can look into if that's the council's desire, um, just mindful of the time that we have to spend on this project. And looking at.
Oh, I, I want to be clear. I wasn't suggesting that we, you know, torpedo going forward with the statute. I, I, but if the, you know, if, if there is something that we can deal with legally, kind of after the fact, I would be kind of interested in just seeing whether we have any options. Cause it sounds like this is an issue, not just for McMinnville, but for a bunch of other cities. But I wasn't trying to do anything to up, upend the, you know, the plan to move this forward, because I think this is critical.
Sure.
Okay. And then just to point out, the single detached houses is for units that are larger than 400 square feet. Now, I also want to point out to you, we are moving forward, going to use the name of family from the code. So single family dwellings, uh, two-family dwellings, and really just talk about uh, these as houses or housing units. Um, moving forward, we think that that's um, more reflective of how these house, housing units are used. And we heard a little bit about that from the Fair Housing Council when they uh, came and visited with us. So uh, we will be referring to these as single detached houses. And that's the parking issue. Okay, so plexes, plexes are everything that are over a single. So a two, a two dwelling unit, three dwelling unit and four dwelling unit is the three different types of plexes that are in House Bill 2001. All of those are required to be allowed uh, within your um, residential zones that allow single detached units. And so um, they will be allowed in, on that map that I showed you, uh, they will be allowed everywhere throughout that. There is the opportunity in the administrative rules to calculate um, an allowance where like 70% of your lots are triplexes are allowed and uh, some other figure for quadplexes. However, we are such a short-staffed planning team that administering and managing a program like that, it, it just didn't make sense to us at all. So our recommendation is just to allow it across the board. And then um, if it becomes an issue, then we, then we need to talk about how we're going to address it and bring the resources fair to do so. Because we would have to track exactly where these types of, of housing units are taking place and keep a calculation as to how many we have in the community relative to the number of housing units we have overall. It would be a, a spreadsheet nightmare for us. Um, and so uh, again, we have the development standards here. We're looking at um, because these in, on our uh, one, two and three zones, these are all maximum high of 35. And that's based on the fact that that's the maximum height in those zones. Um, and then uh, the different types of standards that would be allowed for these types of plexes if it went into a planned development, which allows more flexibility. And so here's one of our errors in our formatting, so we'll need to fix that. Again, one parking space per dwelling unit as allowed by the state or mandated by the state. And the goal of this, I wanted to point out this picture. The goal of, of this whole package with the universal design standards is that these types of housing um, products can come into an existing neighborhood and nestle in fairly easily um, without standing out. So we're not looking to build the rectangular quadplexes in these neighborhoods. We're really looking for architectural standards that allow it to look like a single fam, a single detached home. Um, here are some other examples of that uh, in terms of the different types of um, plexes that you can, that we're looking to try and see happen here in McMinnville. In terms of the infill into the neighborhoods. And then townhouses. Townhouses are also in the missing middle housing types. They're attached units with common wall construction that are on their own separate lots. So there are opportunities for homeownership there. Um, and they each have their own entry point. And um, we're going to start to see this emerge a little bit. Townhomes being used as live-work units. We're getting a lot of interest in that from developers at this time as people are going into sort of this zoomer age of being able to work from home. And so typically the work portion of the live working unit is the ground floor is the work portion of it. And then single rem occupancy, this is somewhat new um, and not that common in Oregon, but um, very common in European countries, historically common here in the United States, and they're starting to make a resurgence. And what they are is it's essentially a housing unit that has everything except for one shared amenity. And that shared amenity is either a shared bathroom or a shared kitchen. And so if you want to think of it as, you know, um, the sort of expanded college dorm opportunities where you've had several housing units that had a shared kitchen or something like that, that's what this is. Um, and it allows for these units to be less expensive because of that common amenity. It's also become fairly popular amongst millennials because it allows for co-mingling in the common space as well. With it being less expensive. And I just tried to share a couple of different ways of that, that those units would be designed. And here's an example from an existing single uh, SRO um, here in the United States. So usually they, they have a living area and their, and their bedroom area. And then um, it's more common to have the shared kitchen area and then have a private bathroom. Here's some examples of how they're built. So they're small SRO projects, much like this one here, which looks like a converted home. And then there's larger projects like this one here, um, which is, and so in the code, we have uh, provisions for both small SRO buildings versus the larger ones. And we have different design development standards relative to those. These were worked on by the um, affordable housing committee as a recommendation to the city for adoption. And again, just like the cottage clusters, this is one that we were working to put into this larger package. Um, Story has been using SROs really well, and I wanted to share this particular project with you. This is the historic Merwin Hotel right here. It was next to city hall, was vacated for a very long time. And then in 2018, the city approved it to be converted into 40 SRO units. The market price for those SROs at the time that it was, that they came to the city to do so was 425 to 550 a month. So it shows how just having that uh, shared amenity, and especially kitchen many, which is one of the more expensive rooms in the home, uh, can bring down the rental price. And it was aimed at people with incomes between 20,000 and 27,000. This was, um, what happened here was Innovative Housing bought this project. Um, they're an affordable housing um, provider based out of Portland. And they do a lot of historic rehabs. It was an old hotel. And um, and they got lift funds to be able to convert this into the 40 units. And they just had their ribbon cutting here in January of this year for it. So uh, the after pictures are, are pretty exciting if you want to go look at them. It's not clear to me whether it's operating as an S R or not. I made a phone call to them to see how that's moving forward. Uh, councillor Drapkin did ask the question. You'll see in our code that there is a recommendation that um, SROs, um, that the living units of SROs be limited to just two people per room. And uh, she asked the question, why are we limiting it to two? The Affordable Housing Committee, when they went through this, worked off of what was happening in other communities and the HUD standards. However, we do think there's, we could um, move it to a provision of three people per room, which is what we use for our other um, residential dwelling units in terms of three pe- people per bedroom. So that could be an amendment to make for that, if a couple with their young child or something was in them. So that's the housing types. Are there any questions relative to those?
Please raise your hand if you have any questions for Heather or discussions you'd like to make to the group.
Okay, I don't see any, Mayor. Um, that's good. We're making good time. So now we'll talk about the universal design standards. I'm going to take a high level on this. And if you have specific questions, feel free to ask them. Um, the universal design standards are set up in such a way where um, we have guiding principles for them. They were put together to meet our great neighborhood principles. And then we have elements that are required and then what we call optional elements. I'm going to change the nomenclature for optional because it's not really optional. You get to choose from a menu list, but you have to choose. You have to participate in that portion of the code. So we'll come up with something else for that. Um, but it's, it's, it's setting down what's the minimum standard that everyone needs to achieve. And then we have another layer of standard where you can choose from the following list of things to add to the project too. So the overall purpose of the universal design standards is again, this neighborhood compatibility. So be, being able to bring housing into these, into neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods that are compatible with the form and rhythm of the um, existing neighborhood build out. Cause we feel like that's where people are most concerned, when they talk about their property values and others. So with universal design standards, um, there's 10 standards that we uh, have in this section. And they again respond to our great neighborhood principles that are over here, and I'll walk you through how they respond to that. But the 10s, the 10 sections are facade, street frontage, front yard, alleys, parking, surface parking lots, common open space and private open space. These two are for apartment units only, apartment projects. So we'll talk about those when we talk about apartments. Uh, compatibility and subdivisions. So just like the residential um, housing standards in our informational pamphlet, we don't have this in the code, but we might put this in the code too, if it makes sense. Um, in our informational packet, we identify, you know, which universal design standard is required for which type of housing type. And um, and they apply to most housing types, uh, and they're related to site design. So the first standard is the facade. The facade faces the street or common greens, courtyards or other common open spaces. And it should be inviting with entry structures such as porches, front doors and windows and other human scaled elements. And when dwellings uh, have car access from the street, paved areas and garages should not dominate. So you'll see this one is recessed, what we call recessed back from the primary facade, and that's what we're looking to achieve. Um, this meets the two principles of human scale design and housing variety. And welcoming facade, so this is our guiding concept for this, for this standard is that welcoming facades contribute to the overall character of the neighborhood, promoting a safe, walkable and bikeable place. And the facade standards are fairly similar to the design standards that we've been putting into um, the uh, planned developments, especially the Baker Creek North Plan Development. Which uh, we had some local developers help us um, put together. Street frontage, so street frontage is really this, this um, this area between your front facade and the street. And the, a common characteristic of McMinnville's older residential neighborhoods is sort of this green, leafy street edge. And it's created by street trees and the plant is stripped between the sidewalk and the curb. And so we wanted to replicate that moving forward in terms of these universal design standards. Um, this standard is looking at accessibility as well as pedestrian friendly. So creating this, this street frontage that allows for pedestrian access with the sidewalk. And it's really looking at trying to minimize driveway curb cuts, maximize the value of the plant or strip, looking for uninterrupted curb space so that um, it's a safer pedestrian environment. And critically moving forward may create room for parking on the street. So we do provide uh, uh, three different ways to look at street frontage uh, in the code and to allow again for that flexibility for developers. Um, we're looking at front-loaded parking. Um, so front-loaded parking means the driveways in the front of the, of the home comes off of the street. We're looking at front-loaded parking with paired driveway. Sometimes there's an opportunity to maximize this shared off with this proximity to each other. And then you have these longer strips here between them. Um, and then again, alley-loaded parking, which allows for uninterrupted frontage. All of our standards have to be clear and objective. So when you look through them, you'll see that everything is a formula. It's not discretionary. Um, what it says is if you do this as at a minimum, you meet the standard. And this is a very prescribed formula. So it's typically prescribed in terms of feet or percentages. Um, so that the developer knows exactly what they need to do and design into to meet our criteria. There's some examples of street frontages. So this is what we consider undesirable. For the record, none of these pictures are from McMinnville, both undesirable and desirable. I learned that lesson a long time ago. So, um, but these are undesirable frontages um, in terms of, you see, they're just dominated by this garage door and driveway system and doesn't have any opportunity for any street trees or other types of amenities. And then this is, and looks like an alley-loaded neighborhood, so it has no driveway or curb cuts. The front yard is also one of our universal design standards. So this is about the front setback and um, the transition between that public area, so the sidewalk and the actual home and the private space in between. And so it's part, it's part of that sort of curb appeal of neighborhoods and also bringing people together in terms of a sense of place. So that um, the design standards are looking at a typical three-part approach to layering for these front yards, which looks at a fence, if people want to do a fence, um, landscaping or pavement to the door itself. And um, what happens in front of the home in this area. happens in front of the home in this area. This is looking at pedestrian friendly principles as well as the human scale design. And just like the street frontage, there's different types of front yards based on the different types of housing units. So there's the neighborhood type, and that's where you're going to find all those housing units up to a quad flex would fit in here, where you do have sort of the front yard setback. And then there's the urban type, where you're working with a zero property line setback. So that's in our commercial zone and building probably a multi-dwelling development. How do you sort of, how do you create that, that, that front yard effect for those types of dwelling projects? And so there's a variety of different ways that you can meet the requirement with clear and objective standards. And this is some examples of that. So again, this is the apartment dwelling, and then this is the neighborhood dwelling. But they, looks like a duplex. Alleys, there's different ways to build alleys. And here in McMinnville, we have public alleys and private alleys, and we have a variety of different standards. So this standardizes our standards for alleys, which is good. And it's, alleys can be pretty critical in limiting the number of driveways accessing lots from the street edge, especially as you get into those neighborhoods where you're looking at smaller lots, where we're really, you're probably going to be looking at a lot more alley, what we call alley loaded development to preserve that street front edge. And the designing, the paving, the maintenance, and the lighting of the alleys, it's all important to ensure they function properly and are safe and attractive. And we typically are, as a city, we would prefer the alleys to be private rather than public. So they are, they are private domain, and the property line usually goes down the center of the alley. And there's a different, there's a variety of different treatments for the alleyways. So the, here, right here, you don't see any rear yard setback. The garage is built right to the alley line. And so presumably, the cars are all parking in the garages. And then here, you see it's much more of a built environment with a curb face here and a narrow entry into any sort of pedestrian crossing associated with it. So we again provide two different types of standards for alleyways that are clear and objective in terms of how people want to build them. One standard has the fourteen foot travelway width, and then has this sort of landscape buffer on either side of it. So that's what's represented here. And then the other standard has the twenty foot travelway width. And then there's parking. So this is what we just finished talking a little bit about in terms of the requirements of how many parking, off-street parking spaces need to be provided. But this now looks at how it's parked on the site. And so it's really looking at standards for garages, for your smaller housing type projects. And what we're trying to get away from is anything that has sort of just a garage dominant facade. And, and the standard is that the length of the garage wall facing the street may be up to fifty percent of the length of the street facing the building facade. So we're looking for this to just be fifty percent of the overall frontage. And that's when it's become critical for those, those lots that only have forty feet of frontage to really go into an alley loaded environment. And again, this is looking at human scale design. So we're trying to design neighborhoods that people will feel comfortable walking and biking in rather than just driving to their home, away from their home. So we do have, you'll see throughout the code, our consultant worked with us and put together all these illustrations, which we think are helpful. And then in our informational package, we have all these pictures we see are pulled out of that informational booklet that we're putting together as well, that will also be helpful, too. And this is a way to get around this sort of long dominant garage facade on the, on the front facade by having this sideways facing garage. Compatibility is one of our universal design standards as well. And this is what we felt we heard was really important to the community is if we're, if we're being required to do this, let's do it in such a way that it doesn't distress our neighborhoods in terms of their value and their sense of place. So new housing should be compatible with its surrounding context while introducing new shape, size, and detail variation, enabling different housing styles and types to sit side by side harmoniously. And this is looking again at human scale design and housing variety. And really to break up the monotony of, you know, cookie cutter housing, it's looking at different functional or decorative elements that will break it up. So roof lines, if you notice, going down this street here, the roof lines are a little bit different with gables, porches, things of that nature on the front facade of these homes. And it helps define those sort of different building styles. So this is an example of different styled homes that have different roof lines and porch elements that create that diversity. And then this is sort of that cookie cutter production housing that we heard from the community that they, they would like to see less of and more of this. And so we're, this is what this design standard is trying to get at. And then the last universal design standard for all housing types is subdivisions. I actually think we need to reword this as a planning team to plan developments. But this is getting at the, how do we do, how do we build subdivisions? There aren't these sort of mono type subdivisions with the same lot size and same housing type up and down the street. So we do have standard requirements that we want every subdivision to have in terms of block length. So most housing types can be accommodated on blocks that are two hundred to two hundred and twenty feet deep and two hundred and thirty feet wide, wide. And what, what, why you want block lengths that are smaller like that is it allows for a lot more connectivity for people to walk around the block to get somewhere, rather than having to get in their car and go somewhere. If you think of your kids who ride their bikes to go visit friends that are down the road. So that looks at plating in terms of the block sizes themselves. And then we went through an exercise to say, if we had, if we said, these are our block lengths, our standard block lengths for the street grid system that we want to achieve, how do we break that block length up into all these different types of lots with different housing types on them, so that we can have a mixture within, within the neighborhood? And so that's what this is looking at, is it provides some examples of how that standard block length could be broken up to provide a variety of different housing types for that neighborhood. And we tried to do it in a variety of different ways to show developers, this is how it can be done and meet the standards of our code. We also came up with, as you know, there's, there's an interest in, for land use efficiencies to really create narrower side yard setbacks. And with this, but it, and so per the building code, you can build down to where you have just a three, three foot setback from the neighboring house, so three feet on each side of the house for six feet in total between the homes. And that can be problematic. And we do have that occurring here in McMinnville. But how do you get in and maintain within that three feet, those types of things? And so there, we did come up with this, with this provision, if developers wanted to use it, which we're calling the usable side yard setbacks. And so what that means is the homes here can be all the way to the property line if the home on the other side has this larger setback on their side. So this would be six feet. So they have a six foot side yard in which they can work, to do, you know, make it functional. And then they're, again, they're up against this property line that sort of goes down, down the, down the property lines that are adjacent to each other that way. So rather than having this house sit in the middle of the lot, it's allowing it to make more use of its side yard if it's all work together. So that's the universal design standards for most of the housing types. Now I'm going to talk about apartments, and then we should be done. So for apartments, there's a wide range of different types of apartments in McMinnville. And, and we wanted to make sure we were capturing all of them. And we have heard from the community, we need to do a better job of designing our, our project, our apartment project, so that people living in the apartments, again, have the right to a great neighborhood to live in. So there's a wide range of sizes from small infill projects to large complexes, from twenty feet in height up to eighty feet in height. And this is an example of a ten thousand square foot development and a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot development. So wide, wide swing there of project sizes. And so we wanted this, this portion of the code to reflect that. And that's why it kind of sits by itself. There's different types of apartments. So there are the apartment blocks, that's the larger apartments. Village Quarters is a great example of that here in McMinnville. And then there's the small apartment blocks. So that's a portion of a block that's been built out as an apartment. There's the walk ups. And so this is the most common development here in McMinnville. We call them woody walk ups, which mean you don't need an elevator. They're three stories high. This is a great example of one that you see here. You probably have twelve to sixteen units per structure in those. But you can have several structures in a project. And then there's courtyard apartments. These are, were fairly common in the fifties and the forties. And usually communities have some of these historically still around, and now they're being built again. Because there's a lot of interest in sort of, it creates density, but it creates it in such a way that it's an intimate density. And so it's, it's a, it's a smaller project altogether. So the apartments themselves really spans in terms of the type of project that's being built, and then how it needs to meet the standards within that type of project. So we're looking at small to medium sites, which are ten thousand square feet to forty thousand square seat, feet, and then large sites, which are over forty thousand square feet. Then we have design standards specific to apartments, similar to the ones that we just went through for the universal design standards. But these are more site development standards. So you're looking at larger projects. So we, we are looking at what's called common open space. So that's when we require an apartment complex to have a common area that's contiguous, where it's actively programmed for the whole project to be able to use that. And then there's private open space. And that's, that's the opportunity for each apartment to have its own little private open space, which could be just even at the back porch or a balcony, that type of thing. And then there's landscaping requirements, there's privacy and screening requirements, wall and roof designs, again, to get away from those just large mono type projects where every building looks the same. And then there's also pedestrian access, so pedestrian circulation within the apartment projects themselves. And I would say here in McMinnville, I've seen some good apartment projects that have really nice pedestrian circulation, but a lot of them are really vehicular dependent. You pull up to your structure, you get out of your car, you go in your structure, and there isn't a lot of sidewalk circulation within the complex itself, taking you to different amenities.
Heather, Lori has a question.
Yeah, Heather, these sound really good. I'm just wondering, do existing apartments grandfather in, and then if they, they do renovations, they would have to meet these design standards? Or, or how, or is there any change for them?
That's a good question. So we, what we don't have built into this, Mr. Shanshae, is, is a discussion of a threshold of redevelopment that would require them to meet these standards, like we've done with some other code amendments. And we could talk about that. So like with the large format commercial standards, if, if there's, let's say it's Safeway, if there's, if the Safeway complex is redeveloping X number of square feet of that complex, then the large format commercial standards kick in. And we could, we could talk about that as to whether we want that type of threshold for these standards, too. It would apply to all new development at this point in time. So in terms of the next steps, we need to change all the references in the code from single family, multifamily, et cetera, to single dwelling and multi-dwelling. We didn't provide you that, with that tonight, so it's very editorial. And then we also need to change our R1, 2, 3, and 4 zoning titles, because right now they say single family, single family, two family, and multiple family. And this will no longer be a single family residential zone, because you'll have up to the ability to put quad flexes in there or cottage clusters with eighteen units. And the same with this and this. And so our recommendation is really to come in with density titles relative to the minimum lot square footage. So to change the R1 zone from single family residential to low density nine thousand square foot lot residential zone. And it essentially says what it is. And then the R2 from a low density, from the single family residential zone to low density seven thousand square foot lot residential zone. And that's what differentiates these two is the actual minimum lot size in those zones. And thus, all the way down. The R5 would be a high density, multiple dwelling residential zone, because only multiple dwellings are allowed in the R5 zone. And then the other thing we need to do is review the comprehensive plan for needed amendments to support these code amendments. There will be a lot of editorial changes in there as well. And then finally, because, you know, the state loves to do this to us, we have a new mandate, is, which is Senate Bill 458 that passed in the last legislative session and will be enacted after June 30, 2022. And what that says is that any developer that builds a missing middle housing project that's identified in House Bill 2001, so let's pretend it's a, I'll, I'll pick an easy one, a cottage cluster of eight units on one parcel. What this bill says is they can come in and partition that eight unit cottage cluster parcel into eight lots, so that they can be individual lots. And, and we have to do it with an expedited process, which is only, gives us sixty-three days to process it. So we need to build that into our code somewhere. And it will be more complicated when you get into the, the units that are within existing structures, like a duplex that has two units in the same structure.
Well, we're down to two minutes. So any last questions of, of Heather? Again, we have our next steps. I think one of the slides we, we had at the very beginning. Anything to wrap up, Heather, before we jump over to?
Oh, that's it. I just wanted to remind people of the public information sessions, and, and we'll work on this schedule to see if we can fill some more time in there.
As always, you take complicated stuff and make them user-friendly, and we appreciate that. So again, well, we have two minutes to run over to the city council meeting. Planning Commission, thank you so very much. Chris, you have your hand, or you're clapping. So, but Zach has his hand up real quick.
Thanks. Real quick, the last slide you had that had that, your outreach effort, do we have that in Spanish as well? And if not, can we get that converted to Spanish? We're done up in Spanish?
That's a great question. I don't know. Monica, do you know, did Noel put that together in Spanish as well?
Yeah, we did not have that in Spanish. I can double check if she did that on all of our social media.
If, if possible, can that get converted to Spanish as well and pushed out? I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Great idea.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, everyone. Thanks for your efforts this evening. And we will conclude our joint City Council Planning Commission work session this evening. And those that are wanting to join with us, jump over to City Council Zoom meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, Zach. Glad you could join us.
This, uh, thanks. It's just a really, I almost, almost clicked update now. This really about, about got sucked into the pit of despair. This is really about, got sucked into the pit of despair. Is it my turn to share feelings and deepest fears?
Absolutely. Go for it, Zach.
Public speaking.
Well, we would like to welcome everyone this evening to our February 22nd, 2022 city council meeting. Thanks for bearing uh, with us as we just have completed a joint uh, session with our planning commission in uh, this evening. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and call on our uh, our city recorder to do a roll call. Claudia?
Councilor Garvin?
Here.
Councilor Geary?
Here.
Councilor Minky?
Present.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Present.
Councilor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Drabkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia. Uh, we will do the pledge of allegiance. And uh, Council President Drabkin, could you lead us this evening through the pledge?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Remy. That takes us to that part of our meeting this evening, where we will uh, ask for comments from our community members. Again, anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Again, we will limit each of the comments to three minutes. If um, if you speak to us, please identify yourself and your address. And uh, we will now go over to Claudia to see if we have anyone that has signed up for um, for comments this evening. Claudia?
Mayor and council, I don't have anyone that has signed up for public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, then we will then move on to this evening, our presentations. And um, this evening, we are going to have a discussion on city manager's evaluation. And Scott Dadson from the executive director of the Mid Willamette Valley uh, Council of Governments, uh, or the COG, uh, has, their group have assisted us with that. And so with that, uh, we'll call on our human resources manager, uh, Kylie Bayer to introduce the topic and introduce Dan. Go ahead, Kylie.
Hi, Bear. Uh, thanks for joining us tonight on the evaluation. And we're gonna start with us from the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. Uh, the COG is, the city's a member of the COG, and we work with them to help um, facilitate the evaluation for our city manager each year. And so thanks to all of you who completed the evaluation. We were able to take those comments and feedback and put it in a nice package to present tonight. And I'll turn it over to Scott.
Welcome, Scott, uh, to the city council. And it's good to have you in your role at COG. And I know you work hand in hand with Sal. And you guys are continuing to do some phenomenal work. And we know that last uh, week you had your annual, uh, your annual meeting. Uh, we had a corresponding meeting here. So uh, Sal represented McMinnville, but uh, we've had a good response from the content of your meeting. So welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening to yourself and to all the members of city council. Kylie, thank you for that introduction. Um, the uh, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments has um, and continues to offer this service for all of our members, and that is the evaluation of whether they're chief executive officers of the municipality, county, or special service district and/or um, uh, anyone else in the organization. We will do those kinds of things on behalf of the membership to assist. Uh, part of the reason the COG does these kinds of things is that it creates a third party neutrality and the uh, collection of information and the redistribution of that information. Um, I have turned over and am turning over tonight to you folks, uh, the evaluation that uh, you folks did. There were five, uh, six participants um, in this process from council. And then the manager did uh, an evaluation as well. And so what you have in your packet is an overview memo. And then you have uh, the overall evaluation, both from the manager's perspective and the council's and mayor's perspective. The questions were the same, and those question categories were. Part one was an evaluation of the manager by city council on one of the following areas. Professional skills, individual characteristics, relations with council, policy execution, reporting, public relations, staffing, supervision, and community relations. Each of the areas contained areas to consider when evaluating. You may have noticed this year that instead of breaking each subsection down further into further questions, they were, all of those things were considered in one question area. So I think uh, that's important to note when looking at the scoring. The second part of that was an evaluation by the city manager, uh, using the same exact format. Um, in summary, the council bela- believes that the manager meets or exceeds expectations. I should stop there just for those who are listening in and may not know what the scores were. The scores were one uh, through five. Uh, one being on the low end, five being outstanding, three being in the middle, or meeting expectations, four would be exceeding expectations. So um, in summary, the council believed that the manager met or exceeded those expectations. Uh, the average council ranking for all areas was above average. They identified the manager's strengths as professional skills, organizational and staff leadership, and public relations and reporting. Communication with council and information sharing were areas that the council expressed as a critical for improvement and they felt could be achieved by the manager. The evaluation shows that the manager's performance is in line with council's expectations of continued improvement and that he's focused on the priorities and goals. The city manager's self-evaluation acknowledged the need for creativity, flexibility, and perseverance in the middle of year two of the challenges of COVID-19, both um, as the pandemic went on, waned, and then came back again, and transitioned to issues of increased staff capacity and meeting community and council needs. The manager also acknowledged the need for a continued focus on building organizational capacity for service and leadership and long-term financial stability. And working to continually improve and succeeding the job, the manager sees the need for council to focus on that long-term vision, reflecting on and connecting uh, with the needs of the community and continuing to engage at that policy level. The manager and his uh, discussion, this is the manager's evaluation by council. Uh, it is my understanding that this eval will be discussed at a future meeting with council and the manager in an executive session. And um, I would be happy to facilitate that as well, uh, in that process and assist the city in that. That is the presentation, Mr. Mayor, um, of, of the evaluation. Uh, I think uh, because of the way we grouped the questions, just as a sidebar, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important for you and the manager and the council to notice. Um, I think there's uh, there were a lot of good comments, meaning fruitful, big comments that I think are worthy of that discussion uh, by both management and the council together. And I think uh, uh, that's what you'll try to accomplish in executive session.
And thank you, Scott. Yeah, we've had an opportunity to talk about that would be the format that uh, we feel comfortable of going into an executive session and taking a look and devising a plan of improvement and having that dialogue. So again, you've done some heavy lifting for us by coming up with the form. And Kylie, I know you've been very involved in this process. Um, this can be a daunting process unless you have a process uh, that is kind of becoming time proven, which this is. And I think, Scott, you mentioned, I think, how helpful it is instead of just checking the boxes, but to put verbal, uh, you know, putting the verbal comments in, help us look at uh, you know, putting the, uh, being able to identify certain areas that uh, need to be addressed, and that's much more helpful. But we will have that opportunity to have a, a direct dialogue as a council in executive session at a later date. Kylie, do we know when that date is? What the council we're looking, what council date we're looking at to doing that?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll find that out and um, you all know. I also have a um, summary report that I can send out to the council shortly. And it just sort of summarizes what Scott has already talked about.
Okay. Thank you. Scott, again, thank you for your assistance.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, we now are going to have a, a further discussion on uh, the MACPAC's uh, presentation. And so we're going to call on our Parks and Rec Director Susan Muir to introduce the topic and to help us go through kind of our next steps and some of the places we're going to go. So um, uh, so uh, we're going to consider approval of the work plan for the recreation and the library facilities. So uh, let's go and have um, Susan uh, do presenting, and maybe Jenny will be a part of that, but Susan, we'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And I have a PowerPoint. I just want to make sure you are seeing that as I pop that up.
We, we do.
Okay. Excellent. We're off to a good start. Um, I also want to acknowledge that there are several uh, formerly known as MACPAC members in the room, and I just want to say hi to them and thanks for coming. Um, I do plan to keep them up to date and looped in on our conversations as they go forward, so I'm happy to see them here. Um, so I'm Susan Muir. I'm the Parks and Rec Director, and I'm back after the January 25th joint meeting with a roadmap for next steps. I thought the energy at that meeting was great. The conversation was really informative and helpful. And in your staff report, you'll notice I summarized some of the themes that I pulled out of that meeting. Um, and I also answered the two questions that were asked by council at the joint meeting. Uh, but the purpose of tonight is to get council's approval to keep the project moving forward. Um, this amounts to council approving the work plan. That was in your packet, specifically pages 11, 12, and 13. I do want to be clear that by approving the work plan, there aren't any decisions being made tonight related to what the building looks like, where it's going to go, um, how much it's going to cost, or anything else. Tonight is really about process. Um, we think this process will allow us to gather more information with a lot of the questions that are still out there. Um, and it will also include meaningful public engagement so that we can bring those decisions forward to you at a later date. Uh, I will see, say, in that work plan, it's really very similar to what was in the MACPAC report. We added two new things, and I'll point those out as we go through it. Otherwise, it's just rearranging it a little bit, um, putting some more detail into some things, and then estimating the potential cost for each item. So I will roll through this. Uh, just a reminder of the why. In 2019, we did a facility condition assessment project on all city-owned buildings. And we found structural issues primarily in the community center and the aquatic center out of the four buildings that we're talking about tonight. We found one system that had failed and several that were in poor condition. Um, these pictures represent what you can see. These are directly lifted from the facilities condition assessment. These were the things that were in the worst condition. Um, what you can't see is also an issue for us. I think I mesh, I mentioned that due to the HVAC issues, we've lost two tenants since this project started at the community center. One paid a small amount of rent, um, so we lost that. And it's really challenging. And I think Councilor President Drabkin brought up at the last meeting that it's getting harder and harder for us to continue to market the buildings and gain revenue on them as they start declining. So it's really important that we keep this project going. And I definitely heard that from both MACPAC and the city council at the joint meeting. Uh, so when we had that 2019 facility condition assessment, we had, we were at a crossroads. We could have decided to invest in our current buildings. And, or we could go through a master planning process, which really let us look at the vision of the future for Parks and Recreation and library services in our community. If we were going to stay on that facility condition assessment path, which is investing in our current buildings, between 2019 and 2024, they estimated that we would have needed to spend a little over $6 million just in those four buildings, just to bring them up to um, a suitable amount of systematic operations. So it did, that $6.1 million did not rearrange the way the buildings look inside. It didn't really allow us to look at programming. It was simply what do we need to do for the systems to keep them going? Um, and as we all know, the council chose to go through the master planning process. And as a result of that, on January 25th, MACPAC delivered to you all a comprehensive plan for the replacement of the library in addition to the senior center, and then taking both the community center and the aquatic center and replacing them with one new building. One of the recommendations that MACPAC had was for staff to bring back a work plan and budget, and that's why we're here tonight. We know on our to-do list from the report, we need to look at partnerships in more detail. We have a lot of work to do on the sites and the locations, um, public engagement, and then refining the proposal. Like I said, none of this should seem very new to you yet. These are the same concepts that the MACPAC had in their report. So let's talk about partnerships and site due diligence. We know we need to take, we have a lot of really positive, working, good partnerships with our um, community. And we need to look at those under a new filter and modernize those agreements. So in other words, we'll take the plan that we have for the new um, proposal and go back to our partners and say, we've got these great uh, agreements in place. We have some historic ones. We have some newer ones. What do we need to change in order to move these great partnerships from where they are today to what they might look like in a new building? So we know we need to do that. We'll look at timing for them. And we will talk about money. One of the things the MACPAC report mentioned was particularly focusing on equity partners, so we'll continue to do that. Um, we just really look forward to taking our current partnerships and, and refining them and bringing new issues to the table. Um, we'll look at space needs. We'll do a lot of the same conversations that we had at phase one, just seeing if there's more partners out there or any additional equity that we can build on. So the pu- uh, yeah, again, the site, I just want to make sure. We're not deciding tonight what type of site, where the location is. We're just mapping out a plan and a budget to have the resources to have that conversation with you. May, it may involve um, you know, real estate agents and other things to do, assessments of prices, and really due diligence on that. Uh, so I broke public engagement down into two phases. And regardless of which phase we're in, we still want to lead with those uh, MACPAC guiding principles and make sure that we're having broad community engagement with voices that represent the diversity of McMinnville. The first new thing I want to mention under public engagement is to, what we think we need to do to be successful is to build on the success of MACPAC and, for example, the DEIAC and all of their work representing our community, and appoint a permanent Parks and Rec Advisory Committee that council would appoint. Um, and specifically, we want a body that reflects the demographics of our community, um, in particular, those for this from opportunity. We really had a lot of good conversations with our stakeholders at the table, and we want to continue that permanently so that we can talk to members of the community about our programming, about our fees, about our scholarshiping. We, we really uh, think that would benefit our programs a lot. Um, we also want to, under public engagement, continue with both formal and informal ways of measuring, measuring what the support is for this project. So that includes polling, as well as informal open houses and other engagement opportunities. Um, the community, we need to continue our communication with our community. Jenny and I talk about this often. We need to do more to tell our story. We need to talk about what we currently offer. We need to talk about the value to our community, um, the value of our services, as well as the current conditions of our buildings and the challenges we face and the vision for the future. So that community, I mean, the communication plan will really help us with that. We also think a part of the public engagement component is to bring forward some of those topics that council mentioned. You know, doing a work session on debt capacity, bringing forward the history of all the successful bond measures and unsuccessful bond measures that we've seen in our area, and talk about those and really walk through the history of why those were successful. of why those were successful and what may have been barriers to those success. So we'll incorporate some work sessions into that. Another new item that we think needs to be added, so this is the second of the two new things that we have in here. The first was the advisory committee. The second is, one of the questions that we get from the community as we move through all these processes in the last two years is what will happen to the existing community center? We've done, we've looked into other bonds that have been successful and some that have been unsuccessful. And one of the keys is to removing those questions that could sway a voter one way or another. And so being able to answer the question of what are we planning for the future of the community center will be a really important part. So we don't know what that will look like yet, but this work plan lays out that as a task that we need to do and allocate some resources for it. So those are the kinds of things that we really think we need to add to be successful. And then you'll notice in the public engagement piece of the work plan, I also divided it into what we can do before the fire district voting and then what we think is better suited till after the fire district conversation. And that really gets into the detail about the MAC PAC recommendation and continued polling and messaging. And then ultimately, that second phase would include formation of a political action committee, which, as a reminder, is not a part of the city organization. That's something that would happen outside of the city organization. Our third priority is to refine the MAC PAC proposal. So this is where we'll use the partnership conversations, the concept plans, the public feedback, and we'll right-size the proposal. That will also likely include phasing. That's something we talked about at the joint meeting. So we'll, we'll bring that back as part of the second, or one of the final steps to refine the proposal. So those are the steps that we know we need to, that we're recommending we need to do in order to bring forward a successful option for the council to consider for a ballot. As we were talking about these steps, it was also helps to think about the context and sequencing of, you've got a lot of plates spinning right now in the air as the city council and we have a lot as a city. So it's helpful for us to kind of map out where are the go, no-go points on some of these things. So we know on the left side of this diagram, we have the city service fee conversation going. We know we have a 22, 23 budget process coming up. We have the fire district process moving along. We likely have the 23, 24 budget process also kind of helping us frame this topic. And then on the right-hand side, we have what we anticipate doing for this project. So you've received the MAC PAC final report. We'll go work on the partnerships as staff. We'll work on the communication and engagement component of it and then ultimately bring back the right sizing conversation if any changes need to be made. And those two things together come nicely will lead us to hopefully a capital facilities bond. A note about timing. So in the staff report, I said, we would not be bringing this forward before May of 2023. And I want to be clear, we are not recommending May of 2023 as a, as a recommendation tonight. We just put this together with a timeline and we want to note that we could not bring something forward to you before then. So we're really looking at something after then. That's not a recommendation tonight, but this charts us a path to get there. And something else really exciting is happening. As you know, you all have been talking about the updating the Parks and Rec Open Space Master Plan. That's the 1999 document that we have. That is currently out through a request for proposal item on our webpage. We're soliciting interested contractors to come in and propose projects for that. And we'll be deciding that. That will be ongoing at the same time of all of this. And there's an opportunity for us to really be strategic as we move through all of these processes. So budgetarily, I mentioned in the staff report that we do have some remaining money allocated in this year's budget. We think that can go to the community satisfaction or polling information. We also think that can help us with the communication plan that we're going to be working on. And then I outlined what's unfunded in next year's fiscal, fiscal year budget. We think that the cost of those tasks is about $220,000. We'll continue to refine that. If you approve this work plan tonight, you are not approving the budget for next fiscal year. You'll be able to look at that in the context of the full city budget. But we did want to just give you an idea of where we're going and what we think might be needed for that and also hear from you, is there anything missing from this work plan that you want us to consider as part of that budget when we bring it forward? So I've given you a task view. I've given you a financial view of the work plan. And I just wanted to give you a really rough calendar that we estimated how we might be able to get from where we are now to ultimately a bond. This is calendar year 2022 and you can see the purple line is the fiscal year. We anticipate the partnerships will be a multi-month process. We will need to pull on some of Amanda's time for that and some of Jeff's time as well as we negotiate those. We need to do some work on the property due diligence will be, which will be a part of those partnership conversations. I mentioned the polling that we need to start doing sooner rather than later. We've heard that spring might be a really good time to look at that to garner what the community thinks about our services and what they would need in order to support the project as it moves forward. We anticipate over the summer, we'd be able to appoint and bring forward to you all Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for your consideration. We anticipate we're going to be communicating and doing outreach on this project until it goes on the ballot. The darker gray areas are kind of where we think it might be more intense as things move forward. We'll continue doing work sessions and developing general city info on this. And the community center feasibility assessment, I mentioned that. We think that can wait a little while, needs to be done before we put anything on a ballot, but we think that doesn't need to start until the end of this calendar year. I'll get to the next slide, which shows 2023. Obviously, that's where the political action committee might be formed. We would also start revising the financial plans and the concept plans and bringing those forward to council at the end of this calendar year. We want to look for anything that might be good for an earmark or potential for lobbying efforts. And then ultimately, bringing the action forward to the city council for a potential ballot date and putting something on the ballot. So that's a lot. I'm done with the PowerPoint now. The work plan and proposed budget on pages 11, 12, and 13 are what we're here to talk about and find out if there's anything additional you'd like us to add to that, if that looks good to keep us going in the direction of moving towards the MAC PAC recommendation and any other comments you may have.
So let's go ahead and open it up for questions of Susan or just discussion by any member of the council. I'll go ahead and I just had a thought, Susan. You know, as, as we look at the plan and primarily a lot of time and effort we put into, you know, what kind of pools and, you know, I, I think the final report had an Olympic-sized pool, had an indoor kind of recreational pool and an outdoor recreational pool. You know, I had given some thought to a situation down in Medford, Oregon, where they had, not with their swimming pools, but with their, with baseball. And they created a regional baseball location. And they were able to bring in a sizable partner, much like professional teams that named the park after a sponsor for a period of, of time. And so, you know, my thought would be as we're going through and that first thing of looking at partnerships, you know, I think some of the partnerships we're thinking of don't necessarily bring money. They just bring bodies maybe to help us. But I would truly, you know, if we are one of the only Olympic-sized pools in Oregon, is there a sponsor out, a sponsorship out there that financially could bring some really substantial dollars to put their name on it? And then work out, I think what really has to happen is then work out a usage, you know, so it doesn't go completely to that group. But there's a lot of revenue generation opportunities that I think would be appropriate to look at and not necessarily recreate the will, because I think there are some entities out there. And like I said, I've only seen one when we had the mayor's annual meeting down in Medford. We went out and we toured that facility and that park was maxed out from teams from all over the western and mid into the Rocky Mountain area, having games one right after another and they, and they had a sponsorship. So I just throw that out as something that had ruminated in my mind as an opportunity.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Yeah, we are familiar with that project and kind of tracked it along the way. There's a lot of good lessons we can learn from that. So thank you for that. Bigger, bigger picture partnerships than just what we have listed is a really good thing to think about.
Absolutely. And proximity to Portland a little bit, there could be some, there could be some partnerships that would really love to lend their name and, and going from that perspective. Let's go to Council President Drabkin, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Director Muir for the time and the presentation. In, in the discussion question that you post in the packet, how will we keep the MAC PAC values of equity and environmentalism at the forefront as we move forward? I see the answer on how we keep equity and I'm, I, I love the, the MAC PAC Task Force. I'm sorry if I'm getting the verbiage wrong on it, but the, the ongoing work group that will continue to, to work on this. And the intentionality of putting that group together, I think that's fantastic. Going back on to the same question though, of how will we hold ourselves to environmental standards? I'm wondering how that will flow through the process? What type of check balance we're going to have in that realm? And then kind of to that point, and I'm not sure when is going to be the right time for this type of feedback, so I'm going to throw it out here and then whatever, we'll do with it, we'll do with it. But that was kind of my, in the entire presentation and the final report, I was so impressed with all of the work and I was so concerned about the expansive parking lots, the massive amount of asphalt and the, in these huge fields. And, and so that was a really big question mark. And then it kind of tied in as we were, it was, I thought, fortuitous that this followed the last discussion we had because we were already talking about parking and in our great neighborhood principles, you know, we're incorporating use of, you know, native or deciduous trees and we're encouraging things in that direction. So I think there's a lot of crossover and I would love to, to hear how that will be addressed. And then also I guess the question of when is the right time for me to bring up my concern about the expansive parking lots? And then lastly, and I'm just getting these all out so I can then turn off my mic. Then lastly, I know that there was also a lot of concern moving through the process about losing any pool time. And so I'm curious, especially as one of our sites is located with, in Linfield, what the opportunities are to use, for the city of McMinnville, to use a private facility like the Linfield Pool in a transitional time or a time of construction? I see Counselor Gary shaking his head, but I don't actually understand. I, I mean, I understand that's not up to us. I get that very clearly. But, you know, as we're looking at these partnerships, you know, we have a, a facility with expansive parking, et cetera, you know, it, that, that would seem as though it could be a possibility to help us through a transition or a construction project. So those are my three points and thank you again.
I have a couple of responses that I could throw out there now, Mayor, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and address that and then we'll go to Zach.
Perfect. Yeah, the, you raise a lot of good points, Council President. And I would say the term conceptual drawing is a really important part to think about those and it also applies to the site plan. So I don't anticipate that the ultimate site plan would look like that. In addition, we didn't do much outdoor planning and that's going to be a really important part of the context of where this building is. So all of those things will need to be looked at. The number of parking spots in the, in the concept and that, I think I would just take that as conceptual. But it does lead me to your other topic about the environmental component of this. And I think maybe what I can do is add that to the potential work session topics and we can talk about green buildings. We can get some numbers for you so you can see what's the policy level that the council wants to set for us to earmark those things for environmental considerations on a potential greener building than what we might typically do. And then just get some information out there for you if that would help. I think that covered, it kind of combined two of your issues into one answer. So I'll put that on the list of work sessions.
And the last is just addressing a potential partnerships to avoid pool closures, but...
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So the way MAC PAC talked about the phasing, it was very important not to have down pool time. And with having a new, an entirely new location, that would be a part of the phasing thing is that, and we've seen other pool, pools do this in the region and in the state, is building the new facility, keeping the old facility running and then close it one day and open at the new facility the next day. And that's the model that MAC PAC really talked about in order to not lose a potential day or time swimming. And that would also help with the phasing piece because then considering the library concepts, then the library would move forward after the pool was removed from its existing site to a new site. So hopefully that helps. That was one of the topics of conversation was how do we phase developing a pool when we really don't want to have no pool? And I would say that for all of our facilities, not just the pool, we want to make sure we're providing the services to the community.
Yeah, and I, thank you. And I definitely understood that intention through the final report. I think I was pushing a little bit to say, why, why would we commit ourselves to using this falling down structure where we've now learned in this packet, we're tarping the, we're using tarps to keep water out. We do an improvement. It's immediately, you know, ruined because the facility is so poor. So why would we try to string that facility along for years? Because construction will take time, this project will take time, instead of really adamantly pursuing a partnership when we have another Olympic-sized pool within our city limits with lots of parking and accessibility? I believe the Linfield is a pool, pool. So I'm, I'm just curious about that side of it. Thank you.
Sure. And actually, we can add that to the list of discussion points we bring up in the partnerships. If we, in, you know, not only just planning for the potential of that, but if we had to react to something in the existing structure, what does that look like? And we have had those types of shared facility agreements with them before, either when different repairs are happening or other things. So yeah, I think we'll, we'll add that to the partnership conversation. Thank you for the clarity, Council President.
Okay, let's go to Zach.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Director Muir, for the fantastic presentation as always. My favorite part of the presentation was the very first slide with the smiling kids, one of which was my smiling child. So just had to put that special plug in. Mainly, I don't have questions. I kind of wanted to just jump into that discussion of, of Mr. Mayor and Council President Drabkin. You did answer those with aplomb. So, you know, as far as the sequencing and phasing go, I just wanted to chime in on sort of a couple of pieces. The partnership thing, you know, the, the final report outlined the current partners, the potential other partners and how we should, what, what items we should be discussing with those. And so I feel like the packet does a good job of giving us the, you know, this is a new facility. We need to, we need to sort of have a frank discussion with all the current users and potential future users. So that's, that's in there. I want to point out one of what I think is the best features of the new facility and it's the two, two different aquatic rooms, if you will, right? There's a, there's a competitive room and it's be separated from the recreational room. So right now, one big, one big encumbrance to the general public and the general population with our users and share agreements is, you know, swim meet weekend, pools basic, pools closed for any recreational users. You know, as proposed, this facility wouldn't have those situations or they would lessen the burden, right? You'd still have a bunch of cars parked in the parking lot and, and dads out reading books on, on, on the benches or whatever. But by and large, we would have just as equal access from the public as to the competitive family. So I think a really, really neat feature of the pool. Bringing up sustainability, which Council President Drabkin did and then many of my colleagues on this call brought up in the first rollout. I, I loved that theme. I think one thing, main thing I could think about is we had a work session maybe a year back about a climate action plan. And I think a piece of a climate action plan would govern how our city does capital improvements and constructs buildings and what's important to our city when we do any project like this, big or small. And I think having that in place or marching forward on that and getting that in place prior to the construction of this or, or to, to maybe have that be our pilot program would be quite effective. And so I think climate action plan would do a lot to affect and implement strong environmental policies in this project as well as all things the city does. So I'll put a plug in for the climate action plan. And then Director Muir answered the question about sequencing. So great presentation. Looking forward to doing it. The only change I would make is can we build this thing this year? Because I'm ready to go. But otherwise, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Let's move over to Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Muir. Two things. One of them, which you're aware of, we got, I got an email and I forwarded it to you. And I was just wondering, what are the possibilities of teaming up with possibly YMCA in the Portland area?
We have had conversations with them about potentially offering some services that we had decided were not on our core services. And the one that I'm mostly talking about is the after-school programming, our kids on the block. Ultimately, they did not end up coming in as a proposer on that piece of it. Jeff and I did go tour the Sherwood YMCA at the beginning of this process and talked with the city from their perspective about what worked and what didn't work because the city owns that building and then they basically contract out who can run the programs in the building. We learned a lot from that. I think the, there is, there is nothing that we couldn't have a conversation about in that regard. The, I just, we don't have any tools in front of us right now, our proposals and some of that. But I do have connections with all of them and I would be happy to contact them. We looked a little bit at that on Phase 1 when we were talking about districting and whether or not there was another service model that was good. But we, you know, times have changed for sure. And so the potential to go back and have those conversations, we'll put that on the partnership list.
Okay, thank you. I know you are well aware of it and you've been looking at it. The other thing is, forgive me, but I've looked at all of them. I am very interested in the environmental piece of it. I just was wondering, you know, are we considering solar at all or anything like that on any of the buildings?
We did not get to that level of detail. We did talk about some amenities on the roof of the first floor to have a green roof. But those are certainly conversations that would need to be considered as part of the budget component of this. And I'm actually looking forward to that. I think that would be a fantastic dimension to add and really think about a little bit more conscientiously. I think MACPAC was ready to have that conversation. It just wasn't on their work plan to really set a policy for how green we wanted to be. But we'll, I'll put a work session together and we'll come back.
Okay, thank you so much.
I will then again ask for any member of the council that has a question or comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go if nobody else has got their hand up.
Go ahead.
Susan, thanks for all the work you've done on this and the work plan. Really enjoyed reading through it and other councilors for your great comments. I agree with the majority of them. I guess my question would be, you put that May 2023 date in there as kind of a placeholder, but where do you see as a more realistic bullseye for us to aim for? And we've had a kind of a moving target with fire districting too. And so I just wanted to have a more realistic outlook instead of the rosiest of rosy pictures of it outside of Zach's wish of this year.
That is the million-dollar question and I'm going to phone a friend after I try and answer it and bring Jeff into the answer potentially for that. I think, you know, we, we all are watching the conversations that are going through related to the financial tools and the conversations that you're having. And so I wrote the timeline and the staff report before the MAC Water and Light Joint Meeting last week. And, you know, even I learned some things there about a potential change, any changes to the timeline that might come up related to the implementation of that. So we're going to be responsive to those kinds of issues as they come up. I said no sooner than May of 2023. I hope it's soon after that. But that's about as far as I can commit to what I think in the crystal ball, but maybe Jeff has a better idea.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know that I have a better idea. I do think that, that once we really settle on sort of the size and scope of the facility, we'll have a sense of how much, if any, sort of capital campaign, external fundraising we would need to do to fill any gap. There's going to be some number sort of beyond which either we just don't have the capacity to fund as a community in terms of capital for, at least it's possible. And if there's a delta between what the community really wants and what the community can pay for with respect to property taxes, then, then capital campaign and donations is sort of the next step. And my experience around these bonds suggests that having significant capital campaign or at least matching pledges in place before you go to the voters really can help leverage a bond measure. And so I would guess that, you know, a year or more of capital campaigning on top of some of the work Susan's talked about would probably push us up to May of 2024. So that doesn't mean '23 is off the table. I think it really depends on where we land in terms of size and in terms of phasing. But I do think that May of '24 would give the community an opportunity to do some capital campaigning as well.
Okay.
Go ahead, Adam.
My follow-up question to that would be, and I could have missed it in the work plan reading through it, but when we think we would be identifying kind of what our burn rate would be to operate this proposed facility? I know it's still, I mean, up for debate on right sizing it. So we don't really know what that burn rate is going to be. But as we're going through this revenue discussion and what we're going to do with fire districting dollars, if we, if we fire district, that's just something that I kind of have on the radar screen, so.
Yes. I think that part of, part of the proposal that the background work that MACPAC did did involve some cost assumptions based on operating. So not only did it include capital, we did see some estimates of what it would take to do the operating component of it. And I think MACPAC is all very well aware that that's the more challenging way of, that we need to really focus our energy on figuring out how to do the long-term and operating component of it. Some of that was laid out in the agreements. There were some estimates of what we might need to do in, in some of our agreements to modernize them. I think some of that is also a right sizing component of it. So I, what I see is we have a pretty general plan with some general finances around it right now. And we're going to take those to the partnerships and see, like Jeff said, identify some gaps, identify what the community is willing to support and just continue to bring that circle closer and closer to a project that we think we can deliver that will have a chance of passing. But operating costs are definitely on everybody's mind.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, Susan. Those are kind of my main concerns. I just, more than anything, want to make sure that we can maintain the parks we have before we, you know, build this huge facility and we still have our general parks in disrepair.
Any other comments or discussion? I know at our last meeting, when MACPAC presented to us, we had a lot of discussion. So what's before us tonight is a motion to approve the work plan for recreation and library facilities as presented. I don't think we've had anything amended. We know that there's nothing that holds us accountable to the plan other than to adopt it so that we have a structure to move forward. So I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. I, I'm just going to, there were a lot of them. So Zach moved and Sal seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays signify? So our, our work plan for the recreation and library facilities have passed unanimously, six to zero. Okay, thank you, Susan. And the members of MACPAC that are on the, on the line, thank you for your lifting and the support that you continue to do. I'm going to ask one last question that's not a part of, of the motion. But we did talk about what it would take for us to do that advisory committee, the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. And I think, maybe I'll just call on Amanda. If we want to move forward with that, that's just something that we take a look at and build the structure and then, and then put out a, a call for those that want to do, an interview and, and put the structure together.
Correct. So the question will, I'm assuming that the recommendation will be for it to be a permanent standing committee. So we will need to have code language adopted for that. And then yes, it would be the standard process for interviewing and then the council, a recommendation and then the council appointing the members.
I just think during this process, it would be appropriate. And so maybe I just ask Jeff and Amanda and Susan and Jenny to get together and bring some type of proposal back to us to see if the council would feel comfortable in doing that, that long-term committee, advisory committee. Okay, good. That now takes us to advice and informational items this evening and report from the council on committee and board assignments. And so I'm just going to run across the top as I see them. Kelly first.
I really don't have anything for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Zach.
Good evening. Thank you. Landscape Review Committee had a meeting since our last one. The session had no active applications. It was a session entirely devoted to code review. And Monica beautifully wrapped up the kind of previous discussions into a proposed document that the committee spent the time working through. And so more to come on that. The DEI Committee hadn't have a, didn't have a meeting since our last meeting, but we did conduct a series of interviews for one full, one open position and one youth liaison position. I had nearly 10 applicants. It was either nine or 10 or eight or nine. I can't remember now. But it was just a beautiful process in which we got to talk to and make a lot of cool new friends. And that motion is in the packet later. So any follow-up questions can come as part of that if need be. And then, yeah, I have MACPAC listed here and then a frowny face because I'm done doing that. But otherwise, all good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go over to Chris. Chris?
AMVLC met and we, of course, set our, had our vote for who's going to be chair and who's going to be vice chair. It was a resounding placement for Carson Benner as chair and, and a little less resounding for me as vice chair. And we set our priorities for the upcoming year. I won't go through all the details if anybody's interested. I will say at the top of those is, of course, the, the two projects that we got some funding out of the ARPA Dollars for and moving those projects along, which would be the downtown Third Street Improvement Project and the Innovation Center. If you want to mainly get in the details, I'd be happy to do that, one-on-one if you're interested.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. YCOM, we haven't met since our last meeting. Airport Commission, we have our first airport commission meeting of the year on March 1st at 3:00 PM via Zoom. And our RFP for Airport Manager didn't have any applicants, so we're back to the drawing board on that. Fire districting, we're going to be looking at getting some polling questions done here in the next couple of weeks. Still working on nailing down a first-year time on that. But we are back and forth in emails and comparing schedules. So hopefully we'll have an update on fire districting polling questions here, our first council meeting in March as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Sal.
Thanks, Mayor. The Ben Willema Valley Cog had our annual meeting last week. I won't go into the full report, but just a couple of highlights. We just completed 1.2 million in sewer and water infrastructure for Amity and Wilhelmina. We have $9 million in grants that we're currently helping to administer or process. We're doing planning services for 22 cities. And I think grant administration services, I think it's a total of like 96 ARPA grants. We have funding requests going into the legislature for additional grant funding resources for small cities. And it was an honor to award the Chair's Choice Award to the Health Clinic in the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde on their 25th anniversary. The Confederated Tribes out of that clinic have done 22,000 vaccinations regionally and they started that program actually before the state got their program up and running. They've also taken over EMS services in the West Valley after the West Valley Fire Bond didn't pass. And they've reduced the service call times for EMS service from 20 minutes to five minutes. So they've done a lot of really good work in the last year and we're really appreciative of that. Mayor, thank you for joining me to testify at the OTC hearing for the 400 million in flexible funding. The mayor testified primarily in behalf of the Newburgh Dundee Bypass and the Donald Aurora Interchange. I spoke to that as well and also pitched for funding for projects like the Adams Baker Cuplet Improvement Project for the city. So that's out of 400 million in flexible ARPA funds. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Council President Drapkin. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Visit McMinnville met on February 16th. I want to take a moment to note that Jeff Knapp, who's the Executive Director of Visit McMinnville, received a Pillar of the Community Award from our mayor the night prior at the State of the City address. But additionally, Jeff, Jeff Knapp, our Executive Director, earlier in the day had been presenting a Lifetime Achievement Award to Maria Stewart, which was awarded by the Oregon Wine Board at the Oregon Wine Symposium. Maria, the longtime McMinnville resident and of course, business owner. She, before she passed away and her husband, Rob Stewart, owned together R. Stewart &amp; Company, which has made a major impact on not just the wine industry, but the city of McMinnville, our downtown and, and her broad involvement in education. There was another McMinnville resident that I also wanted to, as long as I'm talking about these awards, mention, who is Javier Marin, who was awarded Vineyard Excellence through his company JM Vine Growers, which is located in McMinnville. And it was awarded for his excellence in planting and caring for the Shea Vineyard, which is renowned for the quality and distinctive quality of its grapes. Back specifically to Visit McMinnville. Currently, budget-wise, their overhead expenses are, they're coming in under by about $10,000. And their revenue is up over their anticipated revenue dollars. So financially, Visit McMinnville is looking at a wonderful future currently. They're also working on programming, programming specific to hospitality workforce. And in fact, they're being recognized throughout the state. The Executive Director, Jeff Knapp, also won an award for his work at the state level for the work that they're currently doing around hospitality workforce, which of course has been one of the most greatly affected groups of people who work out of, out of many different, sorry, I'm not, the word's not coming to me, but workforce sectors. Also, hospitality is generally not acknowledged. For instance, Sedcor does not have a, a, it doesn't have representation from the hospitality sector. And so that makes a big difference, especially because hospitality and the people that work in hospitality are overwhelmingly women and people of color. So not having that representation at the state level reverberates throughout the community. And Visit McMinnville continues to have been leading a charge in response to COVID as, as affecting the tourism industry. They're very focused right now on creating career pathways and acknowledging hospitality careers. Also, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. And so, and also Aaron Stevenson, the Board Chair, has been appointed to the Oregon. And so, and also Erin Stevenson, the Board Chair, has been appointed to the Oregon Tourism Commission. We received Quarry Park feasibility study, which they're looking at for future outdoor bike recreation, as an outdoor bike recreation park. I added a new word to my lexicon, pump track. Look that up. And this will build on the work Visit McMinnville has already been doing that focuses on cycling communities. I will side note here that as a nearly lifelong McMinnville resident, it was only since the pandemic that I actually got to experience Quarry Park because I simply wasn't aware of it. And so if councilors haven't been there, it's a wonderful afternoon walk. I'd be happy to, to meet you downtown and walk over there and go through it. It's, it's really a gem in the middle of our city that's quite hidden from many. Then they're working on a number of future events and also introduction of a cultural magazine that's geared for locals and visitors alike. And this is to fill a niche that's not currently being met in the community of promoting arts culture and outdoor recreation. It is not an advertised-based publication. They won't be, won't be competitive with other publications in McMinnville. It's, it's bringing in some information that's not currently there. And then McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission meets tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. We're continuing our conversations on construction excise tax. And we're also starting our conversations on turtle doves and creation of an action plan around turtle doves. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. I just want to go over a couple of things, as has been mentioned a number of times this evening. Last Tuesday night was our State of the City and awards, and it was our fifth Mayor's Award reception. Again, a very good write-up in the News Register this evening for those that would like to get much more detailed. Also, the recording of that can be found on our website, the city website down at the very bottom. Again, just very quickly, we recognized for the pillar awards, John Dietz, the manager of Mack Water and Light, Jeff Knapp, the Director of Visit McMinnville, and our own Council President, Remy Drabkin, with pillar awards. And our Legacy Award went to former Mayor Rick Olson, who's also served as a County Commissioner. Lots of good things, lots of good work by these individuals. We started something just a little different. Also, we recognized some partners that have worked very closely with during the COVID, MEDP, the School District, and then Yamhill County Health and Family Services. Lindsay has just done a yeoman's job of, of keeping the county, the city, us all safe as the, as COVID has been amidst us. And so that went very well. I did have an opportunity to go before OTC. We did have an opportunity at our Yamhill County Bypass Committee to talk about those, what is called the IIJA, those flexible dollars that are coming in, and, and much of that's going to be going to ODOT. And the OTC is going to be the directing arm of where those things are being spent. We've testified to one of the priorities, which is called the enhanced priority, that gives much more flexibility to put those dollars into existing freeways and roads that aren't completed. And that would be our preference, to see those dollars go that direction. It could help the bypass. It could help Donald Aurora. The last thing that we talked a little bit is, we don't feel that the bypass is going to get any of those dollars. So we're looking at grants outside of those because there's a number of grants, but it's so critical that we have a local match to go after some of these other grants. And we had a great discussion talking about not asking local entities to finance more dollars into the local match, but to refinance our existing debt and move it from wherever we are today, maybe out to 15, 20 years, so that we don't have a additional cash flow drain on our, on our budgets. And so we're working on that, and that will be the next direction that we'll come to the cities and talking about. With that all being said, let's go to our, let's go to our, our department heads. And I'm going to call on Fire Chief Rich Lippert to talk to us a little bit about the early termination of the Amity Fire IGA. So Rich, we'll start.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor and councilors, thank you for your time. I just kind of wanted to give you an update on the Amity Fire District IGA. As you were aware, on June 8th, City Council adopted a resolution renewing the IGA Resolution 202137 with the Amity Fire District. On the 14th of December, City Council authorized the termination of that agreement, and we gave a note, 98 notice to the Amity Fire District with a March 16th end date. On February 14th, the Amity Fire Board met and officially requested to amend the terms of that termination date to reflect the end date of February 28th, 2022. So I'm asking for council to give me permission through a, I'm assuming a vote, to allow me to terminate the contract two weeks earlier than when the original notice was intended.
I make a motion to that effect?
So let me, let me read what I've got. I've got before as a consideration for early termination of the Amity Fire IGA. And so Kelly has moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chris has seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? The authorization to terminate that IGA with the Amity Fire District or Department has passed zero to six. Now let's run up to our department heads. And Susan, thank you for your presentation. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I did want to let the mayor and council know that we're have some, having some challenges at the Aquatic Center with staffing. You know, we've been recruiting, doing the best that we can, and we've had a lot of lifeguard classes going through. But unfortunately, this weekend, we got to a point where we could not safely keep it open with this number of staff that we had. We had to close it on Saturday. We also had to close it for two hours today. We're doing the best that we can, but it is very challenging in this climate right now to keep staff and recruit staff. So hopefully, we know we're not alone in this. We've seen this happening around the state. In fact, there's a national publication that came out today and had, the cover story was addressing lifeguard shortages. So we're doing the best that we can, and we hope, we appreciate everybody's patience as we try and staff the community, or the Aquatic Center.
And Susan, thank you for keeping the notice out on your website and your Facebook page. I think a lot of people are going there, and it's just, it's, it's hard, but it's the realities that we have to live with. And so thank you. Let's go to Kylie next.
I don't have anything else to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go with Jenny.
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer?
Nothing this evening from finance or municipal court. Thanks.
Thank you. Is, is Matt at the, at the Civic Center?
Mayor, he is not.
Okay. And I don't, Tim, are you on the phone? It's a different Tim, I would guess. So we won't have a, a report from the Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Captain Simons. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Nothing to report from the Police Department, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And let's then go to Jeff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I remind you that this Friday, February 25th, is Judge Cynthia Kaufman Noble's last day as a municipal court judge. If you'd like to reach out to her via city email, it's going to be functioning until close of business this week. We're excited and honored that she'll be moving on to the Circuit Court bench from here. That's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. And Jeff, a great article in the newspaper of her new appointment and the service that she had given to the city. And we've got some interim positions that we'll be talking about a little later in today's agenda. Thank you for those reports and timely, and you guys really take to heart, keeping us abreast of what's been happening in your assignments. This evening, we have one, two, three, four, five items on our consent agenda. Is there any councillor that would request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard on the regular agenda this evening? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Zach has moved and Remy has seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously this evening, six to zero. That moves us to resolutions this evening, and we have two resolutions that apply to the same staff report and will be heard at the same time, but we will vote on each of them individually. We will have consideration, for consideration, Resolution Number 2022-13, a resolution of the City of McMinnville appointing David G. Hanson as a Judge Pro Tem for the City of McMinnville Municipal Court. And we will have Resolution 2022-14, a resolution of the City of McMinnville appointing Michael Vedic as a Pro Tem, Judge Pro Tem in the McMinnville Municipal Court. I, I'm sure Jennifer will indicate that she has amended the resolutions and has sent that out to us. But Jennifer, if you would present.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I also, before I go into some of the details, I wanted to bring up Jason Carvahal. He is our new municipal court supervisor, and I think he's on the line. Jason, if you're there, would you turn on your camera and give a wave so that folks can meet you? There you go.
Yeah, here I am. Hi there.
Great. So, so Jason has been, been with us for less than a month, and in his first week, learned of Judge Kaufman Noble's appointment to the Oregon Circuit Court. So we've got, he's got a lot of unanticipated balls in the air that we're looking at with municipal court. So the, the first order of business is, are the two resolutions to appoint Judge Pro Tem so that during the transition, we have enough people power to keep the, to keep court open each Wednesday as planned during the transition before we appoint, or before you all as council appoint the next permanent municipal judge for the city. I also want to take advantage of this topic to get some initial guidance from you all about the, the process for finding and appointing the new judge. So we will be wanting to get that posting out there, hopefully in the next two weeks or so, because we're already getting inquiries about folks who are interested in becoming candidates for that role. And because by, by local ordinance, the, let's see, it's a very short sentence, but in Chapter 2 dot 40, "The Office of Municipal Judge and the Municipal Court of the City is created, and the holder of the office shall be selected by the council to serve at the pleasure of council." So you all will be appointing that person. However, I think having all of you involved in a interview process might be, you know, a little challenging and difficult. So I'm hoping to get a sense from you all whether you're interested in maybe delegating a person or two, perhaps three, to represent council throughout the selection process before we, we bring the, the final candidate forward. So.
President, Council President Drabkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Quer. Since this hasn't happened for 22 years, what was the, what would help me in, in answering your questions, questions is understanding what the process was historically, if it was anything exceptional. Okay, Kelly can tell me.
I'm not trying to go off topic, but I can tell you.
Right, great. Well, that's, that's what I would like to know, because even in the packet, I thought when we, you know, we had these two recommendations, and I was reading through them, and I thought, gosh, I don't even know how these two recommendations got here. And, and what that process or that application process was, I mean, I saw the applications in the packet, but, you know, it, it's just new for me and most of the council. And so I feel like that would be beneficial. And then I, I would, I feel like I need more learning, I guess. I, I need to understand more in this process because I think it's very significant, and, and I want to make sure we're careful with it, and I understand we have a tight timeline.
Agreed. So I'll, I'll lay out what the process was for, for the, the two appointments that you have before you. And then I'd be happy to, to learn along with you from Kelly what, what the last process was, although I don't think it was the full 20 years ago. Because Judge Kaufman Noble had been, yeah, she, she was our, she worked for the city prior to becoming judge. So, but, so we, because there was such a tight turnaround and we needed to get Pro Tems appointed by you, tomorrow is Judge Kaufman Noble's last day on the bench of the municipal city court. And so we needed to, we only have one Pro Tem right now, Judge Terrence Marr. And we wanted to add folks to the bullpen during this transition period. So the two individuals that you have here were the first people that we spoke with based on Judge Kaufman Noble's recommendation of people who might be interested and do a good job on, on the municipal court as a Pro Tem. So that's, that's the basis by which we are moving them forward. There are other folks who have expressed some interest, and so we may be bringing forward additional Pro Tem candidates, depending on how long this process goes. So that's, that's the, so it wasn't very sophisticated or particularly broad, just because of the speed and, and the need to have reinforcements on the Pro Tem bench.
And so Kelly, do you want to add to, from your experience?
Yeah, I was part of two judge selections. The first one, and it's interesting because evidently Jennifer's in charge of this in the past, it was Candace that managed both of them. But the first go around, and I don't remember the name of the judge at this point, was quite a while ago. And I was there along with an attorney from the firm of Gray and Company or whatever in Newburgh and another attorney. And we interviewed the candidates. And Candace was fairly open in what, who she wanted picked, but that was who it was. And at that time, Cynthia, I think, was the prosecutor. And then the next time, it was Cynthia and Larry Yoder and myself, and I think maybe one other attorney along with Candace did the interviews. So it was, it was very simple.
Thanks for that insight, because I, I know that not all council is able to go through that tedious interviewing process. Sal? And then Remy?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that one of the reasons why I was very enthusiastic about sending a letter of recommendation from the council for Judge Kaufman Noble was the, her stated intent that she worked with the city to try and do a better job of implementing Measure 110 and particularly helping us deal with homelessness services. And I just wanted to point out that the permanent judge that we hire, I think, should have some council representation as well as attorneys, as happened in the past, because, you know, I'm really interested in hiring somebody who can you know, I'm really interested in hiring somebody who can help us creatively implement that new law that voters passed.
Yeah, Candace in particular was very strong on that particular thing and that was part of the reason that Cynthia was one of the ones that was, was selected.
Let's go to Council President Drapkin.
Thank you. In the, in the interviewing process, one thing I noted in the DEI applications that were just done is that those questions had been refined quite a bit, including that there were a number of follow-up questions at the end of the application that it's not something that we would typically have asked before. And I understand it's very different to be interviewing for a commission than it is for a judge, but I am wondering how we bring those types of well-rounded, how we bring that type of well-rounded perspective to, how you propose we bring that type of well-rounded perspective to this process? Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, we would, I would very much like to, to have, if not a member of the DEI committee, someone who is representing the community, perhaps a legal aid office, something like that. I, my intent in this is to create a process, I think, that sounds, that would be a little bit more in-depth than what I heard Counselor Menke describe in the past, because I, I do think it's a, it's a different time. It's, we, you all need to know what the prospective judge's thinking, thinking is on any number of community issues, that kind of thing. So, so perhaps coming up with a draft list of questions ahead of time and getting feedback from council about the questions that are asked, maybe that would be one way to help assure that we are, that we're probing the, the right issues with the candidates.
Thank you, Remy, for those questions and Jennifer, the thoughtful, the thoughtful response on that. Let's go up to Zach, he has his hand up.
A quick sort of procedural question on the position. Would this, who, who, who does this report to?
Well, it's, it's a unique position, so I think the reason why I'm involved and not legal is because now the municipal court no longer reports within the structure of the legal department, it's within the finance department. So I think that's probably part of it. But, so I, I actually validate her time sheets and turn it in, so, you know, from that perspective, I'm doing that piece. But she, the judge reports to you. And so if there are, if there are issues or concerns, then it's, I guess it's a similar relationship as you have with the city manager.
But at the same token, Jennifer does lead the municipal court. From a leadership standpoint, that group, you know, the employees that are there too. So it's a direct line to finance.
I see Amanda turned her screen on, maybe she's, she, are you jumping in or no?
Jennifer answered it. It's, it's one of the two positions that reports directly to council.
Okay, so, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
So I, I would just clarify that while Jennifer does supervise the municipal court function, the municipal court's staff is responsible to support all of the members of the court. So they support the judge, the prosecutor, and the defense bar. So they're, they're not, they're not really, they, they work with and provide support for the judge, but the, the judge's function and responsibility is organizationally separate from, I mean, the, the judge runs the court but doesn't supervise the employees, if that makes sense.
That does.
There's a, there's a reporting relationship that may appear to be there, that's not. And so the reporting relationship really is the, to the elected body for the, for the judge.
Yeah.
That's really why we're bringing you in early, because it is one of the two positions by charter that you directly employ.
Got it. Thanks for that distinction, that's kind of perfect tip to my comment and concerns on the process. And I think, Remy, I would just second Remy's concern to make sure we're, we're looking at this really equitably and holistically and making sure we're not just, that, you know, that we know these three people and we're going to toss it to one of the three people we know, but taking our time and, 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 and making sure it's a good, open process and not rushing to hire, I mean, judges write historically long-tenured positions and ideally that's so, I think, a steady hand at the, at the wheel, especially in that type of position is, is important. So I just want to put my comment, I totally wasn't totally ready for the discussion, I guess, but it does, now that I think about it, you know, we need something that we do need to talk about. And so I think I'd just like to, I would put in my plug for taking time to make sure we do it right and thinking about it as, as holistically and involving as many people at the table as we can and ensuring we're doing that in the correct way. So that's not a finite direction, just more of a general, broad direction. Thanks.
Well, and we're, we're really looking for your initial response to the question. We're not asking you to make a final decision on the process and the engagement and all that sort of thing. If, if you've got some general comments and observations, we can sort of synthesize those and bring them back with a more clear option or recommendation for how to move forward. So I, I don't want you to feel like you, this is your only opportunity to influence this process, it's your first opportunity to think about it and give us some initial feedback. Thank you.
Let's go to Chris.
Sorry, I am still trying to get these buttons on my touchscreen working the way I want them to, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, I agree, we need to make sure we have good representation and lots of thorough questions being presented to the potential judges, a good, and a good mix of people asking those questions. I, I would, I would veer a little off of some of our, of my fellow counselors' comments in that I'm not wanting to have a judge that we are predetermined where their thinking is on certain subjects. I feel like a judge needs to be selected on their independence and their ability to make good, steady decisions going forward. And if we're, if we're making decisions based upon what they already are telling us is going to be their direction, that seems counter to what I think a judge ought to be. So I just want to express a little bit of concern that we need to be careful how we go into that portion, or how we're thinking about that. We, we need a judge that's, that is well-representing everybody and is not predetermined toward a certain type of outcome, regardless of what that outcome may be. That's my general thoughts at this point.
Okay. You're muted.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I know when I said attorneys, at least one of the attorneys in the room was a municipal court judge themselves or had done the work. So I do think there needs to be somebody who can evaluate the person from a legal standpoint. And actually, I don't think it would be a bad idea to have Amanda as part of the committee. Beyond that, I, maybe one or two of the council would be my recommendation, but, you know, that's up to the rest of you folks.
Thank you, Kelly. Chris?
I meant to say, and I'm sorry, thank you, and Counselor Menke's comments made me, made me think of this. One potential person that I think might be also another good one to consider having in the room is the departing judge. As a, as a potential person who would have good questions, good thoughts, and could help make sure that we're bringing qualified candidates to the table. And, you know, I, when we do make a decision on who would represent us from the council, let's have a good discussion on that as well.
I think we may be able to ask Judge Kaufman Noble for some suggested questions and some areas to explore, because she's on a different bench, she may actually be precluded from participating in the selection process. And we would not want to ask her to, we would not want to put her in a difficult situation from a judicial ethics position. So we'd be careful about how, what we brought forward.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, we've had good discussion this evening and so Jennifer and Amanda and Jeff, if you could come back with the process of looking for the municipal judge, not pro temp, but the, the long-term one, and then we can run that by the council and then we can move forward. But before us this evening, we have resolution 2022-13, and that is the appointment of David G. Hanson as judge, judge pro temp. Do I have a motion to approve David in this position?
Second.
It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Kelly. Any further discussion? Then those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes unanimously, six to zero.
Excuse me, on, on the next one, there is yet another typo in this that I want to draw your, your eye to. In, in resolution 2022-14, in the, the resolve section, Mr. Michael Vidicich, his, his name does not appear both times as it should, Mr. Hanson's name appears the second. So that, that clerical error will, will need to be corrected, so just.
We'll amend it, we'll amend it to have his name twice then.
Correct. Thank you so much and apologies for the mess.
Resolution 2022-14 to appoint Michael Vidicich as the judge pro temp. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Chris. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This, this motion passes, or this resolution passes unanimously, six to zero. Well, that takes us to the end of city council this evening. It is eight thirty-three and we will be moving to our urban renewal agency meeting. So I will call the urban renewal agency meeting to order this February twenty-second day of 2022. And we have the same members of the council, we have the whole council represented. Before us this evening, we have resolution 2022-2, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board authorizing the city, McMinnville City Manager or designee to enter into and manage a development agreement with Pebble Dentistry for a grant of $25,000 for the development of the Pebble Dentistry offices at 915 Northeast Lafayette Avenue and its associated public improvements. This is something that we went over in detail in MIRAC, so we'll talk over, we'll turn this over to Heather Richards to present and we'll have a council discussion. Heather?
Yes, great. Good evening, Mayor and councilors, and your role as the urban renewal board members. You have two resolutions in front of you that are recommendations of MIRAC for development grants for two different projects in our northeast gateway district. The funds would come from our property assistance program, which is one of our thirteen projects in the urban renewal plan. In this fiscal year, we have $100,000 allocated to that project and we have not encumbered any of those funds as of this time. So I'm going to share my screen with you. Maybe not. There you go. To show you the projects we're talking about and they're.
This screen, this screen's not up, Heather. There we go.
Okay, thank you for letting me know that, Mayor. So this is Pebble Dentistry, this is resolution number 2022-02, which by the way, was approved by MIRAC on February 2nd, 2022, and you're looking at it on February 22nd, 2022, so Tuesday in all realms here. This is a new construction, this is Pebble Dentistry at the corner of 915 Northeast Lafayette Avenue. This is a schematic proposal of the future project there. Lafayette Avenue is right here and Ninth Avenue that we're, this is Ninth Avenue, excuse me, right here and Lafayette is over in this direction. I'm lying, I should know that, but it's hard to see that schematic. The recommendation to you is a grant for $25,000. They came in with a application for any sort of grant funds to help offset the public improvement costs associated with this project, and so MIRAC discussed it at length. The project that we're talking about is right here, it's a vacant lot on the corner of Lafayette and Ninth Avenue. Ninth Avenue is an unimproved street, so they're required to make the improvements for their half of the street along their frontage. And then also, we have new standards for Lafayette Avenue based on the northeast gateway district and they're required to make those improvements as well. This shows here those improvements that need to be made along Ninth Avenue and Lafayette Avenue. The public improvement cost is somewhere between $180,000 and $200,000. The new construction cost, which includes those public improvement costs, is about $1.2 million and their new job creation is 25 jobs. They came to MIRAC asking for the assistance with the public improvements just because it, it was such a large part of their, of their project in terms of cost and they hadn't asked for grant assistance previously. MIRAC discussed it at length and they decided that based on the, the investment that's being made in the public side of this project, that will always be there for the public improvement moving forward and which is a good investment for urban renewal funds that they wanted to invest, recommend to you, the urban renewal board, a $25,000 grant for this project. Should I go through the next resolution?
Yeah, why, yeah, why don't we? Because it kind of goes hand in hand, Heather, and the discussion. Again, we had the owners of this property and the other property come in and, and testify before MIRAC. And again, it was a, it was a very thorough discussion and the recommendation that's being brought to the advisory committee tonight is working off, or to the urban renewal is coming from the advisory committee. And, and Heather was very involved in all of this, so go ahead.
And they do work hand in hand with each other. So the next project is, the next resolution is for the Boutique Retreat project, again, another development grant. The Boutique Retreat is the tiny home cottage cluster that we talked about earlier that's going to be lodging that's on the corner of Ninth Avenue and Alpine Avenue and is currently under development. This is their site plan for their work. They have these improvements that they need to make along Ninth Avenue. And what's unique about this project is that the City of McMinnville, we have a kind of a first come, first served, which isn't necessarily the lottery win that normally first come, first served is. If you're first in on a development project and there's public improvements needed that are shared between two developments, the first one in builds it. So in this regard, they were the first ones in. This alleyway right here is unimproved, you can see it right here. This project does not use the alleyway in any regard and ironically, the dentistry project does. However, because they were the first ones into our program, they were the ones who were given the honor of improving the alleyway and the costs associated with that. The same thing is true of this, the lamp posts for, for this side street. So the side street will have two lamp posts, one on each side here, mid-block. The specifications that have been adopted for this area has the same light posts that are on Alpine Avenue, but we didn't purchase extras of those standards when we built Alpine Avenue. And so a singular buy and install for that particular lamp is $10,000. And so that was an unexpected cost too for the project. So they came to, they were granted $10,000 for their project originally. They came to MIRAC and said, these are some unexpected public improvement costs that we're bearing the brunt of that kind of seem like they should be shared between the two properties, or is there any way MIRAC can give us some assistance? MIRAC discussed it at length and decide, since they both have the same initial construction investment in the two properties and, and the grant for this one was $25,000, that they wanted to recommend a $15,000 grant for this project to help offset the cost of the light standard. of the light standard and the alleyway. And then that would bring this project's grant up to $25,000 as well for an equitable distribution. So those are the two recommendations in front of you.
Yeah, those are the two recommendations on these resolutions. Any questions or council discussion? Go ahead, Kelly.
So they're both $25,000? For some reason, I thought it was $40,000.
It is $40,000. So Boutique Retreat received a grant, approved grant two years ago when they first came into, to build their project.
I got you.
The additional $15,000 is what's in front of you tonight.
Okay. Thanks.
Forty total out of $100,000 that's in the budget. That's for you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none then. We're going to consider Resolution 2022-2, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board authorizing the city, McMinnville City Manager or designee to enter into and manage a development agreement with Pebble Dentistry for a grant of $25,000 for the development of the Pebble Dentistry offices at 915 Northeast Lafayette Avenue and its associated public improvements. And so do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022?
Point of clarification, Mayor.
Go ahead, Sal.
So we're, we're considering these two resolutions separately. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, okay. I'll move the first resolution, 2202-2.
Okay. And then Sal and then Kelly. We'll ask, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm guessing everyone else, any nays?
Aye, sorry.
Any nays? Okay, Resolution 2022-02 passes six to zero. Next resolution is Resolution 2022-3, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board authorizing the city manager or a designee to enter into and manage a development agreement with Kevin Crump and Sarita Springer for a grant of $15,000 for the development of Boutique Retreats at 910 Northeast Alpine Avenue and its associated public improvements. Do I have a second or do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-3?
No move.
Chris? And a second?
Second.
Kelly? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing none, Resolution 2022-3 passes unanimously six to zero. Thank you for taking the time to hear this with respect to the Urban Renewal Board. And it is now 8:44 and I adjourn our meeting. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.